All for being here and for distinguished guests, thank you for being here as well. We'll go ahead and get started. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which the flag is right behind Mr. Lund there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Second item of the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And we do have a resignation that's at your table side. So I would need a motion to approve the agenda as amended with this resignation, which would go into the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Delft, and we have a second by Cynthia. Any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the amendment? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Item three is celebrating success, Community High School. Mr. Bohan, I believe that's you.
Good evening. Happy to be here to celebrate another road to success at Community High School. Leading our presentation this evening is Mrs. Emily Johnson, science teacher at Community, and Mrs. Hannah Seebull's math teacher at Community.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Emily Johnson. And let's see here. So we wanted to just take a few minutes of your time to share our success at Community. I will start by showing, let's see, there we go. In preparation for this, we had our students complete a survey and basically give us one word to describe their experience at Community. And you've all seen Wordles before, but this is what we came up with. And we were pretty impressed with the words that we saw. Obviously, that's combining some similar words. But we were happy to see what they said about how they felt about our school. Let's see, there we go.
I'm Hannah Seebull's math teacher. I just want to briefly describe our schedule to those of you who don't understand or know how Community High School works. So before COVID, we used to have an AM/PM scenario where they'd do three hours in maybe math, and then the afternoon would be three hours of science. They'd do that for the whole six-week block and earn a half-credit in each class. So one credit total per block, and we have six blocks total throughout the school year. Since COVID, to kind of minimize close-contact situations and moving throughout the school too much, we've now gone to one class per day. So they're in my math class all day for six hours, which I know sounds like a lot, but we've had a lot of success with it, actually. So to kind of break up the day, well, they first focus on their primary class, which in math could be like, you know, Geometry Part A. And then once they finish that, they go to their secondary class, which is still in mine, Geometry Part B. They do their primary and then secondary classes. If they finish that early, we also have a lot of flexibility to focus on something called scraps at our school. Since COVID and all the receiving students that we get, we've noticed a lot of them come over to us with quarter credits, you know, one-fourth credits and not half-credits. So thankfully, with our flexibility at our school, we have the resources and we can accommodate those, we call them scraps, at our school. So sometimes maybe the last two weeks of the block, we focus on those scraps. Also, to break up our day, we've been improving literacy at our school. So every day from, I think, 11:00 to 11:30, right, in all of our classrooms, we have independent reading, and then from 2:30 to 3:00, we also let students independent read as well. And I've had students in my class check out multiple books from the library. There's a lot of buy-in. They have been loving the reading so far, which not a lot of, you'd think not a lot of students would buy into that, but it breaks up the day really nicely.
Yeah, and just a little bit more about our, so far with this new schedule. I just wanted to talk about how last year, which was, you know, kind of a whopper of a year, things we weren't expecting or prepared for, but we ended up with higher than, above-average graduate numbers. So we saw success in a crazy, crazy year last year. And that's, you know, we're continuing even with the uncharted waters, but we're still doing well that way. This year, you know, we've had consistent attendance. We have students coming, you know, early in the morning, parking in the parking lot. We have students eating lunch, eating breakfast. Numbers are up, and we're happy to see kids there. And, you know, Block One, I think we had students earn the highest number of half-credits that there has been in a block in 12 years. So we're on a good upswing right now, which is, it's good to see. Let me see here. We're almost done.
So also, as part of that survey, we asked students to briefly describe one positive experience they've had at Community High School. And these were just five of the responses. I'll give you a few seconds to just read through these yourself. A lot of other responses were pretty similar to those two. Those are just kind of five.
Yeah, and then just to add to that, peer leadership at our school. Back to the Wordle, one of the big words was safe. And I think that would just be kind of thanks to our Sources of Strength group and our peer leaders and just our overall staff and culture at our school. Really makes kids feel accepted and safe. And so that's our goal, and that's what we're all about. Any questions for us? It's kind of short and sweet, but hopefully that is a good success for you. Thank you. Oh, sorry, sorry. Yes.
Don't go yet.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Delft.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. In the Wordle, what one word would you use for the work? What one word would you use for your school?
Oh, let's see. I like to think of the flexibility. I think that that really is a strong descriptor of what we do and how I feel as a teacher. This is my 12th year at Community, and I can't think of any time that I haven't been able to make something work for a student that has that need. So I don't know.
Yeah, I would, this is my fourth year, and I would say maybe like accepting or the word safe. A lot of students in their comments said they liked, that they felt like they fit in with other students there, and they felt accepted and by the teachers as well. So I think that's a good word to use.
Thank you very much, because you've got a great school at Community. You really do.
Thank you, thank you.
Other questions or comments, Cynthia?
I want to question, a comment. I thought, when I saw it on the agenda, I thought maybe you were going to talk about the nomination of the North Dakota Teacher of the Year.
Yes, Mrs. Jertie, yes. We're very proud of Mrs. Jertie. She's an amazing person to work with. Students, I don't know how she does it. I mean, she's like an Energizer Bunny. But she loves what she does, and it really does, it spreads to all of us. We have a really strong team, and we're so proud of her. We're so proud to be able to work with her. So kind of a neat, neat little thing for us to claim as one of our team members.
And similar to when students graduate, Mrs. Jertie got to, I can't remember what it's called, and walked the line or whatever, where she got to walk the hallway and high-five everybody in the hallway. That was, including the superintendent of public instruction, Kirsten Beazler.
Yeah.
That was a teary-eyed thing for me, so. Other questions or comments? I've got one quick one. So we know the pandemic is going to end, and then we'll be into endemic COVID from a physician's standpoint. Plans for block scheduling once the pandemic is over? Are you going to go back to the old way? You're going to keep this, or you have no idea? I'm looking at all three of you, but kind of the boss back there, too. Have you talked about that or thought about that?
We have, oh, we talk about it a lot. I think, I mean, when we talk about PLCs, our school is a PLC. We talk about these things constantly. We talk about what works, what doesn't work, how we're feeling about different systems. And, you know, when we see success, I think the idea is let's keep going with it while it's working. You know, so I don't know what the plan will be. But I kind of echo Hannah's idea that thinking that being in one classroom all day, that would just be dreadful for a student, but it actually hasn't turned out that way. And I think it's because we keep it, we keep it busy. We add different things. And the material and just the overall culture and feel of the school is, it's not like you're just stuck staring at a screen all day. You're kind of moving around and doing your own thing. So it's working. So I guess, I don't know. I don't know what the plan will be after COVID stuff is done, but, you know, we'll be open to stuff.
Well, just remember, most of us are in the same job all day long, so.
Exactly, exactly.
Any final thoughts from board members? Seeing none, thank you for presenting. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item four, which is approval of the October 25th minutes. They are on electronic pages two through four. Do we have any comments or questions, additions, corrections about the minutes? Seeing none, can we get a motion and a second? Motion by Doug, do we have a second? Second by Bill. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Ripley, do we have anybody for public comments at all?
I do have one online, yeah.
Go ahead. If we could keep the conversation to less than three minutes, I'd appreciate if the person online could state their name and what town they live in. We would appreciate it. Do we have anybody in person? I don't have any comment cards, so. Mr. Selk, did you have a comment you wanted to make as a, okay, thank you. I just was wondering. I don't think we have anybody in person, so we'll wait for you, Mr. Ripley.
Am I on?
Hey, Erin, you are on. We're going to test the volume to see if they can hear you, okay?
Okay.
Erin, can you go ahead and give us a sound check quick?
Sure. Erin, one, two, three.
No, I'm not able to hear you. I'm not coming today. You know. Sorry for the delay here, Erin. Can you give us one more sound check?
Sure. Erin, one, two, three.
We can hear you. Go ahead. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. I noticed that your norms, including having thoughtful conversation and advocating for students, but despite attending the meetings multiple times and even being allowed to voice my concerns occasionally, thank you for listening tonight. I haven't heard a good response to the questions I have posed, nor have I heard back from the school board members when contacted, which is what I was told to do the last time when I wasn't allowed to speak and the time before when I wasn't allowed to speak. Kids are currently being muzzled, demoralized, and forced into submission by this committee with no end in sight. The data is obvious, that it is the response to the virus that is causing harms. Kids are suffering under this tyranny disguised as health and safety. There is nothing safe or healthy about children wearing masks all day. We are creating an anxious generation of kids with Stockholm syndrome. If your goal is to educate, advocate, and be thoughtful, this is not the way to do it. Valid questions being asked by parents are now deemed domestic terrorism. And parents that are your bosses are being segregated to alternative platforms to have the chance to speak like this, where if I was in person, standing there, you probably would have allowed me to talk. But I was segregated to an online one that you were able to just say, no, you don't get a chance. I was told by Amber a couple months ago that you just need to follow the rules. Is that what you're teaching the children? The rules with no basis should be followed without question because someone in authority told them so. Are we trying to repeat history? You do not have the authority to make medical decisions for the children that attend the public school each day. Therefore, you do not have the authority to make policies about the medical devices that you call masks that they need to wear. You have no doubt seen the experiment happening in Fargo versus West Fargo, with less cases in West Fargo, even though they have a higher number of students there. I don't know of any other schools that have taken this barbaric approach of masking, contact tracing, and quarantining, maybe because they actually paid attention last year and realized that it didn't work. When will you be comfortable having kids show their faces again? When do parents get their rights back? And when are you going to address it again? Because again, this week, it is not even included on the school board agenda. So when are you going to take the muzzles off the children?
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you. If it's okay with the board, we have a little miscue here. Can we go back to amend the agenda to add a certified staff of the Quarter Award? Would somebody make that motion in a second? Motion by Doug, do we have a second? Second by Shannon. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. So let's, before we go on to the rest of the agenda, let's bring to the, Mr. Selk, could you please come up here? Mr. Selk is going to introduce our certified staff of the Quarter, and I apologize that there was a miscue here, so thank you, Todd.
All right, thank you. I'm here tonight to, you know, I know Scott will give the financial statements here later tonight, I suppose, and talk about a balance sheet. But I'm here to tell you about one of your biggest assets on your balance sheet, and that is the certified employee of the Quarter that is a English teacher at Valley Middle School. And her name is Diane Kruger, and she's in our audience tonight with her husband, and I don't have her husband's name, but that is her husband with her. And he is as proud, I'm sure, as we are. Diane was nominated by our school, in particular, our assistant principal, Jody Dotson, made the nomination. And I'm going to steal from Jody's nomination a little bit and share with you a little bit about what Mrs. Kruger means to Valley. Mrs. Kruger meets kids where they are at academically. She mixes in movement, humor, discussion, reflection, and innovation. Students in her class are supported at all levels with the same level of respect. Her room resembles a mini Barnes &amp; Noble bookstore. There are books galore in every genre and lexile level. She works well after five, excuse me, she does work well after five, but she worked for sure after 4:00 PM at Valley and usually one of the last staff members to leave the building. She reaches out daily to families with both celebrations and concerns, and I think that's key. She's not just the one that makes the tough phone call, she makes the fun phone call as well. Her level of care goes above and beyond for Valley students. She's a very effective team leader. We're organized at the middle level into interdisciplinary teams. She's the team leader of one of our eighth-grade teams. And she's often looked on to by both the district, excuse me, by both the building level and the district level to help with initiatives. She's, when we get asked, who from Valley could represent this type of a committee or this type of initiative, Diane's name often comes forward. Mrs. Kruger is willing to mentor and guide young teachers. She volunteers to take on U&amp;D field experience teachers. We get requests for her all the time, every semester, every year, student-teacher requests. And she just does a wonderful job of mentoring those up-and-coming teachers. She is, without a doubt, one of the shining stars of this public school system here in Grand Forks, and I'm very proud to present to you, Mrs. Diane Kruger, English teacher at Valley, as the certified employee of the Quarter.
Keep it under 20 minutes for the speech, okay?
I was promised there wouldn't be an acceptance speech, so, and with all of the hubbub about humor and stuff in the classroom, no pressure. But I will absolutely keep it short and sweet and say thank you for taking the time to honor celebrations and focus on what to honor celebrations and focus on what is positive in our district. I know that there's a lot of work to be done. There always will be. But it feels good to represent a building that's as hardworking as Valley. I'm here, and I could just as easily be replaced by any person who nominated me. I'm blessed to be in a building that works as hard as they do. So thank you for taking the time to honor me, and thank you for letting me represent a building that I know and love.
Well, Dr. Lunn is coming back. I have to share a quote that I have from Miss Kruger that I have actually written down on a sticky note when Mr. Selk was saying that she is on many committees. I can't remember even what committee it was, but she made a comment that I thought was a font of wisdom. And she said something to the effect of, sometimes the grumbling has to occur before growth can begin. And I thought it was so wise that I wrote it down on a sticky note, and I remind myself of that anytime we're working through a mucky type of situation. I remind myself of that. So thank you, Ms. Kruger, for that font of wisdom.
Thank you, Ms. Glatch. Let's move on to item six, which is superintendent's recommendations for discussion, a review of the school board meeting in the morgues, which is on electronic page five. Shannon.
Be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation and conversation, be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, advocate on behalf of students, and keep the community in mind.
Thank you. Let's move on to item six B, which is Career Impact Academy update, which is on electronic pages six through 35. Ms. Glatch.
Thank you, Dr. Lunn. Well, I am so pleased to welcome again the Career Impact Academy grant writing team. We have executive director Ripley here, as well as Ms. Schlecker, and multiple representatives from the committee. I can't even begin to express the gratitude that we have for the long hours that these folks have put in to try to progress the mission of everything that the Career Impact Academy has to offer. I thought it was really ironic and a great tie that we had Community High School represented tonight celebrating success. They are an example of personalized learning in action, which is why they work well for students who may not fit into what we call our traditional mode of education. And the Career Impact Academy takes that concept and ramps it up additionally as far as what it has to offer our students who might be seeking relevant learning experiences, experiences that will set them up for their career and well beyond. So I'm again grateful that you're here again tonight, spending more hours on this initiative, and I will pass the baton over to Ms. Schlecker.
Thank you, President Lunn, Vice President Flynn, and members of the school board. On behalf of the Career Impact Academy Steering Committee, it is my pleasure to present the information to you tonight on our federal coronavirus career and technical education capital project grant for your consideration. This is a one-time opportunity for state matching funds up to $10 million in capital investment for our career and technical education. The Career Impact Academy Steering Committee, with representation from our public sector, industry, post-secondary, and the Grand Forks Public Schools, have been working tirelessly since February to understand student interest, industry demand, and post-secondary pathways, along with raising the $10 million. To date, this committee has over 1,748 hours of meetings committed to this project. In our presentation tonight, I will be reviewing the different grant narratives to give you an in-depth understanding of our vision for the Career Impact Academy. At the end of the presentation, we can address any further questions you have for the committee or the grant application. So the first thing we'll go over is the grant requirements. The capital project grant is due December 1st, and it requires a one-to-one match of funds up to $10 million. These funds are available through North Dakota's allocation from the American Rescue Plan. This is going to be a highly competitive grant process with requests from the other school districts coming in while exceeding the allocations from the state. This grant is a reimbursement-based grant, with all funds needing to be expended by December of 2024, which just shows the accelerated timeline of this project. As part of the narratives, there's 100 possible points for this grant. The facility and governments will be broken down into 30 points. Our needs assessment and programming, another 30 points. Our post-secondary and workforce partners, 30 points. And then our budget will be worth 10 points. So $10 million and 100 points. So it's a, it's a big project. So we're also going to be receiving inclusion. With the inclusion of our building plans, we'll be receiving preference points. And we're also able to receive preference points with incorporating programs that promote emergency, emerging technologies, and self-employment opportunities. We believe in our grant application, our aerospace and unmanned systems, along with our culinary arts programming, will provide us with these preference points on top of the work that we're already doing. So in these next slides, I'm going to provide to you a high overview of the 12 narrative sections that are included in the application. In this section, the location section, we're going to walk our reviewers through the process of our site selection and confirming the building size is conducive to the programs that we're going to be implementing at the committee. As part of our matching funds, the city has donated the land at 1210 North 43rd Street as a site of our academy. This allows us to build an academy that is flexible, provides growth opportunities, and provides for student collaboration. Many of you guys have seen our building renderings, and they are included in your handouts at your table. This building was truly designed with strong input from our students and our industry partners. The next section is our governance model. In this section, we will confirm that our governance model for the Career Impact Academy will follow the current model being used for the virtual area center. This school board will be the governing agency over the academy. To ensure continued involvement of our industry partners, post-secondary partners, and the public institution, the steering committee felt it was important to keep the committee together, to meet yearly, to evaluate, and continue to provide support. This chart shows the commitment of our partners to continually investing in our Career Impact Academy long after the December 1st deadline. In addition to the steering committee, as part of our grant compliance, the current leadership council, which is comprised of the rural participating school districts, will continue to meet along with the program advisory committee. This committee allows us to stay connected to our industry partners for support and also keeping up with our industry demands. The next section, which is another large point section, is the needs assessment. As we've stated, it is vital to the success of the academy that our student interest, our industry demand, and our post-secondary educations are all aligned and considered. To support this initial work for the project, the Grand Forks Economic Development Center hired Practice Strategy Group to conduct student and industry surveys. So I just pulled out a full, a few of the bullet points for both the student and the industry surveys because it is a very in-depth survey. Under the student survey, it was completed by 3,519 students in grades seven through 12, all from the participating schools in the virtual area center. This survey was completed with industry demand and post-secondary opportunities to help the steering committee determine the career pathways to include at the academy. As you can see, a little bit hard on the screen, but maybe a little bit easier on your screens, 76% of the respondents indicated that college credit was somewhat important or extremely important to them, and 72% indicated they would be willing to take a general education class at the center. On this slide, we can see that the students' interest in the intended career pathways at the center. 47% of the students indicated they were somewhat interested or extremely interested in medical careers. The next highest area of interest was culinary arts, with 40% of the students indicating they were somewhat interested or extremely interested in these classes. We can go down the list on lots of different classes, but those are the ones that jump out at the top. The steering committee also wanted to know who would be, that students would be interested in leaving their home schools to travel and take classes at the academy. Again, here you can see the numbers are very strong that students are willing to leave their home schools and travel to the academy. The next area that we'll talk about is the industry survey. So not only does our academy provide our students with hands-on learning experiences to become career-ready or college-prepared, it also supports our area businesses with a better-trained workforce. The industry survey was completed by 115 businesses, ranging from healthcare, technical services, to retail services. Out of those 115 businesses, 65% indicated the lack of adequate workforce is preventing business growth or negatively impacting their businesses. Those businesses also indicated that they collectively have 1,673 job openings. That's kind of an alarming number, so. This next slide shows the need for educational level. As you can see on this slide, there is a significant unmet need for those industries requiring certificates or two-year degrees and on-the-job training. That's what this one will show us. This slide shows us that the most significant hiring barrier that our industries are showing right now is the lack of trained workforce locally. The Career Impact Academy can help us alleviate this barrier in our community. This last slide on the industry survey shows us that 70% of those surveyed somewhat or strongly agree that the Career Impact Academy was worth pursuing. This also shows the overwhelming support that industry is providing for this opportunity. Lastly, 66% of those surveyed indicated that the Career Impact Academy was a worthwhile public investment, again, showing the strong support of our region for this project. Again, it was vital to the success of the academy that our students, parents, industry, and post-secondary partners had input into their programming that was offered, but also how our building was designed. The Public Engagement Subcommittee conducted four student charrettes, where students had an opportunity to provide their thoughts and suggestions and what their learning environment should look like. I had the opportunity to participate in these sessions. These students were highly engaged and provided amazing direction for the team on how to design this building. At every session, students reiterated that they wanted hands-on, real-world experiences in a building with lots of natural light that didn't look like a school. I heard that at every single one of the charrettes. Additionally, industry engagement sessions were held for each of the 10 programs areas to gain insight into their needs and how the building could support their businesses. Overwhelming responses from all of these industries was the need for this facility in our region. Lastly, we conducted six public engagement sessions at parent-teacher conferences, volleyball games, football games, the farmer's market, and the U&amp;D homecoming football game. This gave us the opportunity to talk with our community, tell them about the project, and also gain their input into why they felt it was important. I heard everything, and we heard everything from, yes, this is so needed. We need these opportunities to learn trades. We need more opportunities to train nurses. Just to state of the few of the things that we heard. You can see the little yellow tabs. We had parents putting tabs on there, so. The next narrative that we're going to go through is program offerings. The grant requires that our program offerings align with our needs assessment. The committee spent considerable time matching that student interest survey and the industry survey and working with our post-secondary partners. The data indicates strong support in the 10 programs that we will be offering, which include health sciences, precision agriculture, computer science and IT, welding, engineering robotics, culinary arts, building trades, automotive services, aerospace and unmanned systems, and advanced manufacturing. These areas all align to push the long-term success of our building. The next narrative is the curriculum delivery model. We will be providing face-to-face instruction in a block schedule for students with the ability to be flexible with virtual courses. We have worked closely with the rural schools to solicit their input into the delivery model that will support their students' success as well at the academy. The grant, the next section is our secondary school participation. The grant does require a minimum of six area schools to participate in the academy to receive our maximum points. Currently, there are eight participating schools in the virtual area center, and we have asked each of those member schools to provide a letter of commitment to the Career Impact Academy to show support for the center. And those letters, we're requesting to have back by November 19th. The next narrative that we go into is scheduling. Our programming committee continues to refine the schedule to best fit the needs of all of our students. With input from our high school administrators and our rural schools, the committee will move forward with a block schedule. The next narrative area is the career advisement and guidance. The Career Impact Academy will continue to work collaboratively with the Red River and Central Guidance Departments to offer guidance to our students. The rural school districts will continue to offer guidance to their students. The next narrative, we work on post-secondary and workforce development. So not only does this grant focus on our K-12 education, but it places a great emphasis on post-secondary and workforce development. As part of our steering committee, we have representation from Lake Region State College, the University of North Dakota, and Northland Community and Technical College. This collaboration ensures that students are college-ready and our programs are aligned to those post-secondary opportunities. Additionally, this opportunity supports adult education in our region, and it allows regional industries to train in the facility after hours to support upskilling of our regional workforce. And at this time, I will turn our presentation over to Mr. Lunn, who will review our current fundraising activities.
Well, good evening. Good evening, President Lunn, Vice President Flynn, and Assistant Superintendent Glatch. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to update you on the industry engagement portion of our exciting project, the Career Impact Academy. I want to recognize not all the folks who've been involved in it, but there've been a number of people, even in this room, that have been a big part of making those requests. Want to especially recognize Mr. Ripley. We've had a number of organizations commit, and I'm going to share those numbers, but I think Mr. Ripley has been a part of every single one of those, the large asset have come in, really brings amount of, you know, that professionalism to that conversation in terms of the delivery of the programs and how this is going to benefit students as well as industry. So really want to give a quick shout out to Eric and all the teammates around the table. So as a quick update, we have, I estimate by the time we're done with this, we will have sat across the table from 125 different organizations explaining the value of the Impact Academy and quite frankly, asking for an investment. And not all of those are going to come in, but we've had those conversations. So it's been a really rewarding experience, whether there's an investment or not. Individuals are excited about what this can do for the community and for industry as well and for students. In terms of actual success, we passed a milestone today between firm commitments and verbal commitments. We have over $7 million of committed funds. A little over $6.5 million of firm commitments, so pledge forms in hand. $460,000 of verbal commitments. We're waiting for those pledge forms. So you add that up, that's $7,036,200. Seven zero three six two zero zero. In addition, and that is from two political, this is really rewarding, and I'm happy to share this, from three political subdivisions, and I'm not sure if any applications across the state are going to have that type of collaboration. Two civic organizations, the Economic Development Corporation, my organization, and the Chamber of Commerce. Two individuals, and 36 companies so far have said, yes, I believe in this project and want to invest our resources in the Career Impact Academy. In addition to what I've just reported, we have pending requests from 35 companies totaling $3.32 million, $3,320,000. In addition, we believe in this next week and a half, we will visit with 24 additional organizations and make requests totaling approximately $810,000. We are, from an expectation standpoint, we don't think all of those are going to come in as requested. We're being a little bit of aggressive because, number one, it's important. Number two, we need the resources to match the $10 million from the state. We're discounting those by 33%. We believe that we'll, based on that, we'll have We believe that we'll, based on that, we'll have just short of $2.8 million, $2.767 million of, we think we'll realize that additional investment. And so, that adds up to $9.8 million. So, we have a little bit of work to do even beyond what we have out there, so... So, that, the pending request includes a conversation that we're going to have a little bit later in the agenda that I'm sure you read about. And so, if that were to be realized, that really gets us right up there, almost to $10 million in terms of using that, applying that 33% discount to the rest of the pending requests and future requests. Again, very happy to provide the update. Exciting day when we pass that, pass that milestone of $7 million of commitments. And we're still working very hard and having conversations every day and many of the evenings as well. Happy to answer any questions or turn it over to Ms. Ripley. I believe he's next on the agenda. I'll leave it at that.
Any questions for Mr. Lund? Keith, I know right at the end of your presentation, Mr. Phelan stopped in. Do you want to mention, mention the city's commitment to this endeavor? They've been very committed and have committed land and everything.
Yeah.
Since Mr. Phelan is here.
I can run down, President Lund, if I've missed something that you're asking, please let me know. But I mean, this is a really, as I mentioned, the political subdivisions all coming together. So, the city of Grand Forks, as you know, a little over $1.7 million of our commitment is the land for the project. So, the city of Grand Forks, through its jobs development authority, is purchasing the old Holiday Inn or Grand Forks Inn and Suites, a more recent name, raising that facility and then donating to the project. So, that will be the location of the project, which we think is very good from a couple of different standpoints. It's very close to industry, but from a transportation, particularly from the rural districts, coming in on Highway 2 and coming up I-29, we think that's fantastic. So, they provided that. In addition, thank you for your investment of $1 million, and Grand Forks County has invested $400,000 in this, in this exciting project as well.
Just to make sure everybody knows, I did not donate $1 million. It was the school district that donated $1 million, so just in case anybody's confused.
Very generous. Thank you.
All right, I get to, you go next, and I get to answer that great question that comes up in a lot of conversations, which is sustainability, which is not only a fair question, it's a question that needs answering. And so, whether you're a school or member or a community member, or internal to the district or external, it's a question that's on everybody's minds, which is, once we put up a building, the Career Impact Academy, how do we continue to sustain that after the building is built? And so, what you have in your packet is a little bit of a, it's a one-page summary of the budget, and behind that is the spreadsheet that was shared with the finance committee that really goes into more depth about where do we get those numbers from. So, the finance committee presentation got to see this last week, but for, based off some feedback I got from that presentation, there was an ask to kind of break it down into a one-page, straightforward revenues and expenses. And I think that that was great advice. And so, I put that together for you and constantly walked through that. I've mentioned many times that the state is set up to be able to support CTE programs once they're established through a reimbursement model that encourages collaboration, that it is more effective and efficient to cost-share CTE programs with other districts because the labs are expensive, instructors are hard to find, and sometimes you need multiple districts to band together to be able to drive the enrollment to the point where it's justifiable to have the program in the first place. So, if you're the three students in Laramore that want to take automotives, pretty difficult for them to have access to that program unless they collaborate with another school district. So, the state's set up to encourage that type of collaboration through the reimbursement rates of existing CTE programs. The rate that we're utilizing in our forecasted model is 50%. 40% is the flat state rate. There's an accelerator on the state rate based off of the number of districts involved with any particular program. For every district, there is a plus-four incentive on top of the 40%. So, we are trying to be conservative with 50%. We feel like that's a fair number to go with. We think there's an opportunity to go above that based off of, again, some of the creative and innovative programs that we feel like we can deliver, both face-to-face and virtually. The other revenue line then would be made up of other revenue opportunities, mostly falling right now in this summary to the Grand Forks Public Schools. Part of the reason that is, is because we're proposing utilizing our existing staff that we're already paying for anyway, to be able to deliver programs in the Career Impact Academy. We have talked about expanding our programs as well. There's new programs that are coming online with this development. Welding, precision agriculture technology, which is extremely important for this region, strong partners in that area, culinary arts, which is new for us, advanced manufacturing, given the manufacturing cluster that's in town. Those, those programs would need, and they build the, to expand medical careers. So, those instructors would be new expenses. And again, if you look at the second page, it's represented there the number of instructors that are listed both under the certified and classified staff to make up the total staffing number. The other revenue would be contributions from our partner schools. The number that's utilized right now is 50,000 as a starting number because that is the number that is received through the virtual area center. Our concept is to build upon the existing virtual center. Right now, school districts play a flat rate regardless if they have three kids involved or 30 kids involved in the virtual center because they're, we don't have to stand up a facility, right? And so, therefore, we can just charge a flat rate regardless if they use it or not. The funny model for this center will probably start there, but it may also look at student enrollment, you know, it is a price per student, price per slot that's based off of student demand, student interest, things of that nature. So, that's kind of a placeholder right now. The other things that we put in there that, again, being conservative, hard to project, student tuition from non-member schools outside of the area center. We have had that within our virtual CTE center. It's very possible we'd have that with the Career Impact Academy as well. Don't want to project that incorrectly, so conservatively, we have that at zero. Industry trainings. Tanya talked about the interest from TrainND and job service in the facility like this, and industry utilizing that space to not take their production labs out of production and to yet utilize a space like this to upskill their workforce. Hard to put a number on that. We know it's going to be there, conservatively, we're putting zero. Same with rental agreements. You'd think there'll be opportunities for rentals for events with a multipurpose space and other items, but at the same time, it's hard to project that right now. So, we're being very conservative and putting that at zero. The expenses below then are the salary and benefits of the proposed staff, the supplies, the travel, the miscellaneous, cost of ownership based off of a 60,000-square-foot facility. And then, last but certainly not least, is the deferred maintenance. So, revenues versus expenses is differed by that last line, line F, deferred maintenance, of $260,000. Not going to stand up here and tell you there's not a cost to operating a building. The cost is really in the deferred maintenance of that facility. Operations, I think we can figure out the revenue offsetting the expenses. In fact, I know we can. It's the deferred maintenance piece that the district's going to have to determine if that's something that you want to have the investment into this building, both on day one and into the future. I think we talked about the finance committee. We want to make sure that there is an investment so that while there might not be deferred maintenance in year one, that there is a balance in year 10 when the deferred maintenance needs to happen. Whether that comes out of the building fund or another location is obviously on the table for discussion. But as I look at this revenues and expenses from a sustainability side of it, it's a deferred maintenance piece, I think that is going to be the item that needs to be discussed by the board and the investment that would need to be made to making sure that this building is sustainable moving forward. As I close up and before I would take questions, I probably will turn it over to Mr. Phelan since he took the time to come over here from his meetings to talk about from a city perspective. Give you just some quick stats. Talk about the benefits of CTE that are up on the screen. Obviously, engage in relevant, hands-on, tied to industry. Certainly, we can show you lots of data on students that are involved in the CTE have higher graduation rates, makes sense, they're engaged in school. It's the reason they sometimes, the difference between what I have to take versus what I want to take, huge difference in that. The idea to make them career-ready through the skills that are needed in workplace, collaboration, communication, creativity, problem-solving. Not surprisingly, we see huge interest in CTE in our district. I looked at our count right now, it's a duplicate count because students will take sometimes more than one CTE course in a year. 3,292 students that are enrolled in CTE courses at our high school level right now in the district. Okay? It's got to be duplicate because we don't have that many students at the high school level. But if I look at the surveys that were completed and I break it down to look at just Red River, Central, and Community, and just the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, we got 1,423 students that we surveyed on that. So, now I know I'm not doing a duplicate count. Of those 1,400, 1,199 of those students said that they were extremely interested and very willing to travel to participate in the programs that were provided in front of them. So, you're talking a huge percentage of our students that say, "Yes, we want these opportunities in front of us. We feel it's a worthwhile investment. We want that to move forward." We talk about investment a lot. The district's investment on the front end in the capital campaign, pending the ask later tonight, would be 1.5 million to get a $20 million really upgrade into our facilities, which it needs. And it's been talked about both in the one report from 12 years ago, it was highlighted in the GLG report and the facility plan, the facility task force to order facilities. The opportunity that's before you is the fact that there's dollars available that are outside of the district to help us fix our facilities that have not been there before. And not surprising, we've seen communities like Minot, Mandan, Williston, Dickinson, Fargo, Jamestown also be trying to access the same exact funding. This is the right investment at the right time for our district. I think those other districts have identified it as well because of what they can do for CTE and the alignment then to our student interest, post-secondary opportunities, and workforce. So, certainly, as we look at our why and our new mission, but also the previous mission in terms of providing an environment that's preparing our kids to be the term that's used as choice-ready. This idea of that we're making kids available for their opportunities outside of high school. We think about what the Career Impact Academy can do and providing our students with a first-class, high-quality facility that's engaging, that's relevant, it's hands-on, and it's going to prepare for our students long beyond high school. So, with that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Phelan.
Mr. Ripley, maybe before you turn it over to Mr. Phelan, would you like to go over a little bit on the second page of the financials? Just to go over it a little briefly for people that aren't on the finance committee that may not have seen this before, and then we'll let Todd speak.
Sure, I'd be happy to. The second page in your budget is really taking a look at the existing virtual area center, which this Impact Academy would absorb. So, this academy would be really to try to build off of the current virtual program that's already being offered. So, we wouldn't have two separate entities. We just have one entity that could deliver both face-to-face or virtual. So, there are some existing expenses that are going to need to slide over, for lack of a better word, to the Career Impact Academy. There's also some new expenses. The new expenses for the Career Impact Academy would be the combination of moving staff from Red River and Central and hiring new staff to fill those expanded programs. So, that comes up then with the total CIA expenses in that column number three. Again, utilizing the state projected reimbursement of 50% of those costs breaks it down, which then shows what the remainder in the last column of the local share of those expenses. Should be noted that there is no state reimbursement on deferred maintenance. We talked about the one-time opportunity for infrastructure. That's because the state does not provide dollars on an ongoing basis for infrastructure. The items on the bottom get to be a little bit more, maybe a little more difficult to kind of walk through in a quick fashion, but really what it's trying to do is it's showcasing the difference between the expenses that are being charged that would normally be on the general fund of the Grand Forks Public Schools, but it's currently being charged out to the virtual area center. And, and really, by accessing, again, the higher state rate and the cost-sharing of those expenses, the savings that being involved with that can provide to the district. Again, from just accessing more state rate. Grand scheme of things, we still have to look at, again, the deferred maintenance costs, which, which, you know, is listed there at the bottom. But those bottom two charts are really trying to look at specifically to this Grand Forks Public Schools, the cost of the salaries and the benefits if we move them off of our general fund over to the Career Impact Academy versus then the projected contributions to the Career Impact Academy from both the local district and our non-GFPS member schools, and how we try to reach that final two lines on the bottom there. That helps you, Mr. Lund? And you probably have more questions, but again, I want to take the opportunity to recognize the team that's before us because we have a team of experts from Jonathan Holt, Mike McLean from GLG can talk anything that you want to know about the building design. We have Becca Kruger and Keith Lund from the EDC. We have Janelle Regiball from Insight to Solutions, who's just been a rock star for our program management of this. We have other members of our steering committee that are sitting in the audience that have donated so much of their time and their efforts to make this happen. But right now, maybe I'll call Mr. Phelan. He can talk about the city's interest in making sure that this is a success.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Todd, thank you for coming. Appreciate your input.
Well, another honor to be here. And there's not even an economic development project here in front of you too, so that's kind of nice. Again, my name is Todd Phelan. I'm the city administrator for Grand Forks. Honored to be here on behalf of the city of Grand Forks and also the Jobs Development Authority. And I think, as often has been said, the reason why we have to do it is because we have to do this project. This is a one-time opportunity that's not going to come around, and so, we got to match the $10 million. And so, the city and the Jobs Development Authority is all in on matching on that $10 million. And I think I also want to give high praise to two of your staff members, and Tanya Schleicher and Eric Riplinger. And to be frank, we wouldn't be here without them. And so, thank you to them. And I think this project is less about the project when you really, I've had the opportunity and honor to work on many projects across this community for the last 20-plus years. And generally, the project's important, but it's really the people and the partnerships that you develop along the way. And that's what this project has done. It's really aligned local government, and it's aligned you with local industry. And so, that's the huge benefit of this project. We, we get wrapped up sometimes in deferred maintenance and who's going to mull on and this, that, and the other. But really, what this project has done, it's aligned local governments. It's aligned local industry with K through 12. It's aligned you with higher education, whether it's been with Northland or Lake Region or the University of North Dakota. All those things have combined, have brought us here today at a really remarkable moment with the Grand Forks Public Schools. And so, it's an exciting time that we're all in. And so, Mr. Ripley and I, we were at, last week, we visited Strata and Jim Bradshaw, and we, we visited JR Simplot. In both of those meetings, industry had a lot of questions because what they have done themselves is they've kind of taken the law into their own hands and have been doing some of their own training. And so, they're really pleased that we have aligned our public schools with higher ed and with industry and are willing to adapt along the way with them. So, we've received a lot of positive, not only in the location, but what we're doing, and our programs are aligned quite well. So, I guess I'm here to say today is that the city of Grand Forks is all in. And so, it's not often we're aligned with our mayor and our city council. And so, we are aligned on this and not, there were questions, could we get this done? And the point is, we're awfully close to getting this done. And it's a remarkable story, and it's a remarkable outcome that we're in front of, and we have to do this. And so, with that, we're here to try to raise, the goal of the city and the Jobs Development Authority that we could raise money locally from local government with industry. And if this, the city of Grand Forks and the Jobs Development Authority needed to close some gaps at the very end, that we would try to do that, but we didn't want to do that. We wanted to do that at the end and not say that too soon. And so, we're really pleased at how far we've done. And we wouldn't have been where we're at without the whole entire team here. And without your staff members, it's been awfully fun and joyous. And so, I don't say that very often, working in local government. But the reason why it's been a lot of fun is because it's been a team effort throughout the community, and people have found a way to, yes, so it's, it's been pretty darn exciting. So, with that, I'd answer any questions. So with that, I'd answer any questions you may have, Mr. Lunn.
Well, thank you, and with my million-dollar donation tonight, it's, you're closer, I guess, so. Let's open up the table for anybody who has questions, not only for Mr. Phelan, but I think anybody in that distinguished group of their questions that board members have or comments that board members have. Go ahead, Cynthia.
I'll go ahead and ask this question, I think it's really more for probably the design. So I briefly texted with Eric Ripley today, and one of my questions, or actually, that was over the weekend, one of my questions was, why not put community high school there? Because here's where I'm coming from, I fully support the concept. But as you know, I also support art and music, sports, and our other facilities. So what Eric Ripley indicated to me is that you had talked about perhaps potentially putting community high school there, but that you would need a lot more space. Now, I noticed somewhere in these documents that it does say that you'll need general classroom space as well. So I'm just wondering, that would say, if we didn't have to rent a facility, I don't have that budget in front of me, so I didn't do my homework in terms of looking to see how much that rental cost is. But, I mean, at some point, we need to think about that as well. So what would that take to include, if you've had those conversations, what would that take to include a community high school in that? Now that we were fortunate tonight to hear the module schedules and all of that. So I don't know if that's putting you too much on the spot, or if you have had those conversations.
No, absolutely not, and good evening, President Lunn, Vice President Flynn, and members of the board. We've had initial conversations about that, obviously, right now, it's not factored into the current program. If you look in the documents, we have a Phase One and Phase Two scheduled for the grant application. The goal all along was to match the industry needs with feedback from students in the community and try to match that up to get a successful grant, but that's just the start of the project. That's a fascinating idea that I think we could explore. We know that the site can support at least 85,000 square feet, if not more, and so we're starting to think about how that building could expand if we're able to get past that 60,000, and which would require additional funding, of course. And so I think the question would be, after the grant, really looking at that as an option and what that would take. I think at this point, I can't answer that exactly, but there could be some synergies there with the general classes that we do have, and you could match those up and try to make it a little bit more efficient. So, great point, but something that we'd need to investigate further as we move on to the project, and hopefully, we can start digging into that in early next year, so.
Other questions or comments that board members have? Shannon, go ahead.
So, right along kind of the same lines as Cynthia, you know, the 1.5 million one-time investment certainly isn't, you know, isn't a small amount of money for this district at this point in time. So, you know, but it's a one-time investment, you know, as I expressed at the finance meeting and previously, it's the sustaining costs of the investment that I think we owe it to really consider where those dollars are coming from in the future in light of conversations that we have ahead of us with budget cutting and then, you know, potential referendum ask for our existing infrastructure that we have to do something about. And while it's absolutely a benefit to our students or a subset of our population of students, that is of grave concern where the, you know, quarter of a million dollars year over year over year that we're gonna have to, you know, absorb into the current expense budget that we have. So when Cynthia raises, you know, a concept of, you know, how can we maybe cut a cost in terms of a rental that I believe is a six-figure or close to six-figure cost, you know, we should be keeping those things in mind going forward. One of the questions that I have, and maybe Scott can maybe talk through our funds and where these dollars might come from, is, you know, in terms of the deferred maintenance, if that's the quarter of a million that really is the cost, or if it's salaries and benefits that might come up in the future for staffing of this facility, how can we as a, how can we as a board consider that in the short term and then in the long term? Is there, you know, what funds could we set aside dollars or earmark dollars to sustain a project like this?
Well, I, maybe I go back to Cynthia's question, the community high school, and Shannon, you referenced that, too. We pay about $161,000 per year for about, close to 17,500 square feet. So in kind of in reference to, you know, to the conversation about the, you know, Phase One, Phase Two, things of that nature, you know, that's where we're at, about a little over $160,000 a year to rent a community high school, and that takes care of, you know, maintenance, you know, et cetera within that. So as far as the Career Impact Academy and what Mr. Ripley went through in detail on revenues and expenses, you know, some revenue sources not quantifiable, that I'm thinking there will definitely be some dollars, none of those are built in on the expense side with, you know, the virtual aspect of it and getting more school districts involved and getting that reimbursement ratio, you know, 50% is conservative in some of those areas, I think, as well. I think it really boils down to the facility in my mind, that, and whether $260,000 is a reasonable figure to set aside for deferred maintenance. You know, we could question that with any of our buildings or even with the referendum in June that failed, if we were gonna have $80 million in facilities, I mean, right out of the chute, are we gonna have, are we gonna set aside, you know, six, seven, eight million dollars a year on top of that, you know, for future improvements and needs? When I look at, when I weigh the, personally, when I weigh the potential to have a $20 million investment, and we're talking about $260,000 roughly, that's less than, if we look at it from a general fund perspective, that's less than 0.2% of our general fund budget. And to me, I look at the opportunity not only from a facility standpoint, I even reference it to our tour at Trader tonight. You know, we've got, you know, a lot of needs there when we look at where our career tech ed students are at Red River, Central, et cetera. There's a lot of needs there that are not being met, from students being turned away to facilities that are not really up to the standards where teaching should be, where these students should be taught. There's a lot of non-financial quantifiables in my mind that also weigh into this and the opportunities for our students and our community. But I boil it down to upwards of a $20 million investment in our community that, you know, this is probably a once-in-a-30, 40-year opportunity from what I've seen, and in effect, if it had to come out of the general fund for improvements, it'd be less than 0.2% of that. So, that's where I'm at, but I do feel there are some untapped revenue opportunities that I feel Mr. Ripley was appropriate in not building in. And then, you know, the maintenance needs of the classrooms where we have our students in right now, our CTE students, there's a lot of needs, you know, within those walls that we would not have to do, or we could repurpose for other needs for our high schools.
Thank you, Mr. Delphin.
Thank you. Before I address the members of the committees, Evan, are you in any career tech ed courses right now at Central? If you would, what course or courses are you in? And would you talk about perhaps what it is that you struggle with in those courses? And then if you want to share some of the positives of the course, but we want an understanding of what the challenges currently are with the settings.
Yeah, so currently, the only CTE class I'm in right now would be accounting, so that wouldn't even be involved in the center, but then like, going to previous classes, we have like building trades and foods and stuff like that. And I guess the thing for that would be, you don't really get enough time one-on-one with that teacher per se, so like, they kind of just have to teach to a group and not to like, one kid who might not know how to do this or know how to do that. So I guess that would probably be the biggest struggle, especially with like, the two hands-on CTE classes that I've been involved in, which would be the building trades and the culinary stuff that we do at our schools.
And if I may follow that up, if you were to take, if there were to be a career academy and you were, again, a sophomore, whatever year you were, would you be willing to have traveled there for those courses, or do you think you would have stayed on your home campus?
I would have definitely traveled there, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Evan, I appreciate your feedback. Being a student, you're experiencing things presently, so your feedback is critical.
Thank you.
To the members, it's very evident that you've put in many, many hours, you've had a lot of conversations with multiple groups, individuals, I know a number of you from previous or current students that were in schools, and I do know your work ethic, your beliefs in this community. And in Mr. Ripley, your statement was something the effect of, and I'm gonna misquote it, as you age, you know, the memory fades a little bit, you said something about you really do believe that the sustainability will be there with the state funding, the salaries presently what they are, and as we move forward, correct? So you think we're there, and then hearing from our business manager that it's 0.2% of our annual budget, yet, quite honestly, we, you know, we have a middle school right now that is maybe limping along, yet I really want to be proactive with this community. So what I would say is, if another member of the group would want to perhaps address this with what you have experienced with those that you've met with, and if they talked about the budget concerns that they have with the district right now, anything, any conversations any of you would like to share?
I can maybe start with that and then certainly turn it over to Keith or Becca that also been part of those conversations. As they've indicated, I've been pulled in a little bit for some of these industry asks. I think the biggest thing that they want to know is that we have a plan for this building, that the idea that would be that, the concept, get it started up, they understand that, they understand the value that it provides to our students and the opportunities, it's, how do you make sure that in 10 years, the building doesn't have a need that we didn't foresee or plan for? That's really what they, not even so much the dollar amount, it's that you have a plan for sustaining the building in the long run. And to me, that's the takeaway that I've heard from a lot of the industry partners.
Thank you.
Mr. Phelan?
Todd Phelan, what I've heard from industry is they want the school district and the surrounding ones to succeed, and so they think this is an important moment. I think beyond the building, they want to make sure that, you know, we don't have any things in the past, but they're also concerned about program sustainability and adaptability. So there has been some just conversations, and Mr. Ripley and I had some conversations, are you guys going to be able to sustain these programs? We've had some false starts. And so I think they want to have, to be part of the solution. So as we move forward, if we're gonna dedicate money to this, whether it's one-time or program act, is that these programs are sustained over time, they're adapted over time to industry, and I think this is a real great opportunity for the school district and the surrounding ones to really engage with industry because they want engagement. And so they've been less concerned about, you know, are you gonna keep the buildings up? They've been more concerned about, are the programs gonna be, are you gonna keep up with the programs, keep up with the times? And will you adapt to industry? And so that's, I think it's really important, not only to have us as local government entities, but to have industry, as we've talked about. What's gotten them excited is that we got this virtual technical career academy, and we're gonna make it more around the building, but what's gotten them excited is that if you invest in these, in the building, you invest in the programs, we're gonna plan to have as part of the application, I think, Tanya, there'll be an industry group that will be tied with local government to ensure not only the building is going, the programs are moving, and we're adapting with the current times in our region. So that, those are the conversations I've had, and nobody has said that we don't need this, they've only said we should have done this sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Lunn's gonna come up here as well.
President Lunn, I'll underscore everything that was said, and I'll just, the only thing I'll add is that we've had conversations with a number of industry partners that have indicated a willingness to be a partner long-term, to provide resources for each program, to be a partner, to provide tooling, to provide supplies, that type of thing. I think it's in their interest to do that, to have a presence, to introduce themselves to potentially future workers. It's hard to quantify, we're really focused on the capital campaign, you know, we have a deadline here looming soon, so, but I think there's a great desire for industry to be involved and partner in the long term.
Mr. Ripley, maybe you could answer this for me, if you know, I'm wondering, what percent or what numbers of students actually take a CTE course in their career? I mean, what numbers are we talking about? And then also, what number of students get turned down because the classes are full?
Yeah, I have, I could certainly answer both sides of those questions. So the percentage that's been reported back to us has been that through the course of their student's high school career, we have approximately 76% of our students that will be enrolled in at least one CTE course. And again, these are all elective course offerings at the high school level, kids can choose to take zero of them and still graduate. But I think they see the relevance, they see the fact that there is an engagement to, an alignment to what do I really like to do, what am I good at, what I want to do, what I want to maybe find out at high school, what I don't want to do. It's okay to do some career exploration at the high school level versus the college level. College is a pretty expensive career education curriculum, right? So let's let them figure things out at an earlier age and get them to make an educated decision past high school. So 76% of our students will participate in at least one CTE course at the high school level, and that's significantly higher than any of the other large school districts across the state, roughly 10% higher on average. As far as the second question about students that we've turned away, on average, at least in our medical careers, which would be probably the number one area, you think about the industry need, great post-secondary options at UND, Northland, Lake Region State College for those students. So we tell kids, pick something that you really like to do and are interested in, and then we tell them you don't have enough space in our classrooms and you get to go pick something else less relevant for you. That number is roughly 75 students a year that will register for medical careers that we tell them there's no room. And it's really, we had a situation about three years ago at Central High School, we had to tell senior students they couldn't get into their class, and there's no other option for them. You know, it's not come back next year as an upperclassman and try it again, it's, we don't have any room for you and you don't get the class, period. Pretty hardening to tell students that when you think about, again, the major, major need that we have for medical careers workers. So when we see survey results that show that a huge percentage of kids want to be in medical careers, I think it's incumbent upon us to be able to try to provide that to them. But right now, in our existing facilities, where do we do that? We don't have the facilities to be able to expand that program. We've had the demand, we just have not had the space or the facilities to do it.
Thank you. Other board questions, comments? Jackie, go ahead.
Thank you again for all of your work on this, this is a lot. So I had a couple of questions, and I think one was addressed, which was equipment, curriculum, tooling, those kinds of things, those are costs that I feel like in some of these are really expensive equipment. I think about just medical services in general and dummies and all those kinds of things cost a lot of money, but it sounds like we've got some, willing to invest and supply those things, so that's good to hear. The other thought I had was transportation, and I don't see anywhere where this is a line item in the budget, so I'm just curious as to where those discussions are going for
I could have just stayed up here, sorry about that. So regarding the equipment, it is built into the $20 million budget, there is a line for equipment to support the programs, that's currently at 1.3 million. So that is equipment as part of the $20 million budget. Obviously, there's some industry partners that have said, we're willing to donate some of that equipment. What that does is it lowers that 1.3 million, which then provides more dollars to help with the construction, right?
Provides more dollars to help with the construction, right, and so I think that that's certainly helpful, we also have some existing equipment at our two high schools. Cause we're moving some programs over, Otto's might be a good example, we have some Otto's lifts, so we can help lower that cost as well. Um, which again, provides more dollars in terms of the construction, which I think will probably be needed, it's hard to put a, I mean, I, I know J L G has put a, a square footage. On that, but I mean, it, we're talking um, uh, projections of what is the square foot for a building um, cost based off of. Um, you know, where we're at right now, and then you take a look at availability of supplies, materials, contractors, things of that nature, so I think that that's uh, a number that they probably. Um, you know, know that it needs to be up a little bit just to be able to, to, to cover that cost increase potentially. The uh, the others thing from a sustainability for equipment, you talked about the ability for donors to provide some in-kind equipment and some ongoing resources as Mr. One represented. Uh, the other thing would be is that the CTE provides, um, we get federal funds for the Carl D. Perkins Act. Uh, for equipment, specifically for equipment, can't be used for other things, has to be used for equipment items uh, on an annual basis. So there's equipment um, to be able to replace and keep it relevant, things of that nature. Uh, your second question about transportation, um, we do have uh, in the proposed budget, we have forty thousand dollars for travel. Um, that was just again, thrown out there, that would include um, also the field trips and things of that nature, so you know, that number may need to be increased. Um, it really depends on student demand, how many students need transportation? Right now I look at um, our existing CTE programs, for example, automotive is at Red River High School, students transport themselves from Central over to take part in that class. We have our building trades program, kids are building a house on site, students transport themselves to that, so there's no cost to the district. But it also could be a potential barrier for students to be involved with that, so really, how many students need transportation? And then what does that look like and what is the cost of that, so um, it, it will go down to that, as far as our outline schools. Every school district's responsible for transporting their own students, so Tom, somebody responsible for the cost of transporting their students to and from the facility. Uh, where more would be the same way, so we would be looking at Grand Forks, Central, Red River, Community High School. What is the cost and what is the demand for transportation to get those students to and from the building? The last thing would be is, one of the reasons why we selected the site where it's currently at on Gateway, uh, is it is currently on a city area transit route. Again, there could be explorations with the city to be able to say, is there an opportunity to have a stop there at some point during the course of the day? So we think it'll be a combination of those few factors, uh, and a lot of times based off of student demand for the transportation. Do they need to get a ride there and back? Hopefully that helps.
Thank you, uh, your, my family will, will tell you that I'm not much of a dreamer, I'm kind of a nuts and bolts guy. So I'm wondering, any of you, and it could be you or anybody else, think about, dream big. What, what do you see in, in five years, in particular, I'm thinking about programming, cause I'm looking, I'm thinking about. You know, what if you have a drone class that's online, you could get forty school districts in the state, have kids sign up for something like that. But I also think about what's going on in the evening hours. I mean, for those of us that would love to be a chef at Harry Steakhouse, we could take a culinary, I mean, I'm wondering. So think, think big, think dream, dream a little bit, tell me what any of you think the potential is for the next five, ten years? With this Career Impact Academy, especially that wouldn't occur if we don't have this.
My, my biggest question to that would be is um, I, I don't think we'll be building it big enough, I, I really don't, I think the demand will far exceed. The capacity that we have in this building, um, it doesn't matter who you talk to, whether it's an in-town school. Uh, at the high school, Red River Central, the outline schools, uh, conversations with East Grand Forks and East Grand Forks Senior High, they would be interested in coming over, I, I just don't think that. I, I think this is such a need and a demand for the region that the sky's the limit, honestly, and, and we already have. Strong programs with great instructors and great students, but you give us the right facility and we can knock it out of the park, we really can. I, I think, I look over at Jonathan because he's got a great, great line, I'm gonna call you up Jonathan, uh, because he talked about. The reason that he was excited to be a part of this project, not only from his, one of his employers, J L G, but also as a community member. And um, and so anyway, if you would not come out and articulate that, that'd be great.
Good evening, everybody, Jonathan Holt with J L G, uh. Yeah, you know, we were, uh, I, I think it was our first building committee meeting, we, we went around and just kind of said why we were excited or what we were excited about and. And uh, some of you may know, I, I've, I work in the restaurant industry as well, um. But I, I changed careers uh, about three and a half years ago and came on board with J L G and the reason, one of the main reasons I did that is. Is to work uh, on projects that had generational impact in, in this community, in our backyard and I. I haven't worked on one that will have that impact like this one will, I mean, I think about, I grew up here. Um, I, I'm a product of the Grand Forks Public Schools, Mr. Doubt it, it was thirty years ago this fall when I first walked into your North Dakota Studies classroom as a student of yours. Um, and I wasn't three years old either when that happened, so uh, but you know, my kids are here now and will be a product of this school. Um, and, and there's, I just can't think of another project and, and we've worked on a lot of projects at J L G and, and there's not one that's gonna have an impact. Like this one, and you know, I'm, I'm able to reflect back on the opportunities that I had going through the Grand Forks Public Schools and they were significant. But um, when I started my, my culinary career, working in that, there, there weren't those opportunities here. I, I had to go elsewhere to get training for that, so to think about the opportunities for new industries. And increasing industry engagement here um, through new programming at this, it just uh, it's really, really exciting. So I am a dreamer, uh, sometimes too big, um, but, but this is, I, I can't think of a more impactful project in this region. Um, in the past few years that I've, that I've got to work on.
Good evening, members of the school board, I'm Becca Kruger, I am the workforce development manager at the Grand Forks Region E D C. And from the very beginning, getting to partner with Eric and all these fine people has been a dream in and of itself. But when I really think about the impacts of this project, um, I grew up on the Minnesota side. And we have access to something called post-secondary education enrollment options. Which meant that at the age of sixteen, I could enroll in college, I could get dual credits. And I actually graduated with my two-year degree at the same time as my high school degree. And North Dakota, they have dual credit opportunities through CTE programmings. But nothing that's really necessarily a defined career pathway with certifications along the way. And for me, I grew up in a family that was very poor, like po, I always say, so poor that I couldn't afford the O and the R. And so the ability to receive certifications as a student that would cost you money. Or to be able to learn about careers that are right in your backyard, where you can literally graduate from high school. With training in a program and get an apprenticeship making sixty to eighty thousand dollars a year, that's life-changing. That's really life-changing and so you talk about generational impact, as Jonathan said, that's very life-changing. And so I think when you talk about dreaming, that makes me really excited, the impact that it's gonna have on students and on lives. But also I think about on our community as a whole, every day. I get the opportunity to go in and talk with H R managers at many of the E D C member companies. And many of them are struggling with workforce, you've heard that, right, that word workforce, this pool of people, arbitrary numbers. But those are people who are here, who are building a community, who are buying homes, who are going to our schools. Who are paying property taxes, and everybody likes to joke that, you know, the number one export of North Dakota is its people. But we have an opportunity right here as a community to change that, to build a workforce pipeline where students. And adult learners are learning about regional opportunities or companies. Um, that they never would have been exposed to, aside from a center like the Career Impact Academy. So when you think about that and about the impact that that has long-term on our community. On our ability to afford schools and houses, um, I think that's something that I'm really excited about. Um, so yeah, both on the student front, on the industry front and on the community front, I think that this is such a project. That I've spent many nights mostly having nightmares about, no, but dreaming about, uh, and so. Uh, thank you for considering this opportunity and I really do hope that you'll invest in our future. And help us get this to the state level.
Thank you, any further clarifying questions by any board members? Shannon, go ahead.
I think what uh, Becca just said, and I think Eric Ripley said it earlier too, so this is, I mean, this is really an investment. That I think as a school board we're making, um, and so Scott, can you, I just remind me, so the one point five that. Well, the million that we've already committed, but the five extra, are those coming out of Esser dollars?
Yes, the original uh, the one million dollar commitment that the uh, school district has made would be out of Esser funds. Um, you know, the five hundred thousand dollar uh, ask that's coming up a little bit later in the agenda. Uh, would be Esser as well, however, um, part of our Esser uh, funding, what we'd submitted for was uh, the state of North Dakota. Uh, was gonna take a hundred and thirty-three dollars per student to upgrade some, uh, some of their software systems. The legislature uh, today there was some discussion about that being eighty-eight dollars. When our case, that's uh, you know, that difference between a hundred and thirty-three and the eighty-eight dol- eighty-eight is about four hundred and seven thousand dollars. That we will not need to uh, pay to the state and so um, you know, we would be able to fund. Four hundred of the five hundred thousand out of um, actually uh, a, a different commitment that we had to the state. And so really, we'd be looking for approximately ninety-three thousand dollars more to cover that, that gap. Uh, which also could be Esser funding, yes.
And, and then to follow up, cause it, this is an investment, if this is um, like the quarter of a million year over year, if that's a deferred maintenance. Cost, is that something that we should um, consciously set aside, like part of the building fund mills to sustain?
Well, we, we really need to look at all of our facilities along those lines and, and uh, um, you know, the, the ten mills. Um, recently we were successful on the, with the referendum vote, um, that's generating two and a half million dollars a year. That's uh, again, I don't wanna belabor the point here, but we obviously have more needs than that, but um, you know, we would look at um. You know, the Career Impact Academy facility, oh, really, we should need to look at that along the same lines as all of our facilities and, and the needs that we have. And the, and the various timeframes in which we'd have to make investments, so uh, you know, so of course, you, you know, whenever that, you know, if the building. Would be built and operational in twenty twenty-four or, or whatnot. You know, that, that first year, we're not gonna be putting two hundred and sixty thousand dollars into that facility. But uh, consciously, uh, as a board and as a district, we need to look at our facilities and look at when, you know. When various systems would need replacements such as roofing or uh, H V A C, et cetera. And work towards a, a facilities plan for that building and, and each of our other buildings and, and to be able to. Uh, get to a point where we can tackle those facility needs at, at the time they arise.
Thank you, Mr. Bergy, Catherine, do you have any final thoughts, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Lynn, I, I think um, you know, there's nothing I'm gonna say that's new, that hasn't been uh, stated already tonight, but just to reiterate. When you think broadly about the return on investment from this opportunity that's in front of us, I think it's absolutely extraordinary. Um, Mr. Fielin mentioned, uh, Mr. Lynn mentioned just the synergy in the community itself. These are people that vote for us, they support us on the daily, um, they are the people that will come to the polls if there's a time that we have to go back there. I think we'd be very short-sighted if we didn't take an, a, a, a look at that angle in addition to. Um, the, the baseline opportunities that are there for our kids, the mission of our school is to prepare our students for their future. The, never in my career has there been um, any sort of opportunity such as is in front of us right now. And one of the things that hasn't been mentioned, um, is the number of students that would remain, I am convinced would remain engaged in school. Meaning not dropping out of school, engaged in school, we lose kids right now because of that whole round. Uh, round hole, square peg type concept, uh, kids who don't see the relevancy of what we do. Who benefit more from hands-on opportunities that we just can't reproduce in our schools that this, this center would allow us to do. And so when you think about the cost, the social cost of one dropout, that is a, a, a cost that cannot be um. Uh, captured on a spreadsheet, but it is significant. And so I'd really encourage the, the board to uh, to continue to progress this um, with our community members. Um, and I give it my full support.
Thank you, this, this item was on the agenda tonight for discussion. Uh, um, we'll be back in fourteen days and actually by the time this meeting is done, it'll be thirteen days. To, to actually, to actually vote on this, and Mr. Ripley and all of you at that first table except for Pam. Um, I, I might kind of put you on the spot, but if board members have questions or concerns. Between now and rather than waiting till the meeting on Monday, are they able to reach out to you? Uh, so that, so that they can have questions, uh, have their questions answered. And maybe we'll conduit through Mr. Ripley, but if you have a question for, for uh, for Mike or, or Keith or somebody like that. He can probably get your question to that, but I'd rather have board members have the opportunity to get their questions answered. Uh, i- if, if, as, as it comes up over time, if that's okay with you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate, great, great discussion. Dr. Brenner and I knew we were gonna go way over our agenda time, but he had planned for that, so, so apologize for that. Let's move on to uh, the next item, which I gotta get my cheaters on, is the. Debrief of the Schrader Middle School building turrets on page thirty-seven or. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, before that, the North Dakota School Board Convention Attendees Report, which is on page thirty-six. Uh, two of the three people that attended are here, uh, Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Bergy. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, you wanna start us off with any insights you learned from the uh, last uh, meeting?
Um, sure, and I'll be very brief because we are behind schedule here. Um, so I attended both the school law sem- seminar on Thursday as well as the uh, conference sessions on Friday. Uh, what I thought of interest on, in the school law seminar, we had a session on student privacy and data during the pandemic and legal cannabis in the public schools. Which are interesting, but not necessarily seen too much of a uh, impact on the board itself. Um, but then there was a panel, an administrator panel, a number of administrators uh, uh, from across the state. Talking about recruiting, hiring and retaining quality teachers during challenging times. And you know, just some of the stuff that they talked about there, I thought were very interesting, um, you know, how they're dealing with uh. You know, shortages of teachers and staff and, and how are they getting and trying, trying to. Uh, make the pool larger for, for them. Um, there was a lot about talking about the culture, culture and, and how they're empowering and, and showing the staff that they're listened to. Of course, pay came up, pay is, is, is an uh, issue, um, and pay needs to be increased, uh. But they also thought that, and they spent a lot of time talking about, you know, that they, um, you know, that there are other, you know, the benefits that you get as a teacher. And the retirement plan and all those things need to be more talked about, which are very good uh, benefits and it's not just all about salary. Uh, Jamestown, the superintendent of Jamestown talked about, they have some dual credit classes that they have, that they've teamed up with uh. And one was Intro to Education and a Special Education Technician Program. Um, so that way they, they were trying to get their students more interested in, in, in getting some information. So hopefully they would go into education as a profession. Developing that relationship with the colleges like U N D and Mayville. Um, one of, I don't remember which school district it was, but they've actually uh, im- implement, implemented. Where if they have a student teacher that comes in the fall and that student teacher is available in the spring. That they will actually pay them for that uh, you know, second semester to be a para, to be a sub, just to get them, continue them involved with that school. With their school, so that way, there, good chance they may come back in the fall with, there's an opening. Uh, mentorship programs, the teachers and administrators in, in, in a couple of these districts, they've established a strong mentorship program. Um, open enrollment and tuition agreements was another topic, actually Laura Cobb from here in uh, Olson, Chuntan Sandberg. Chuntan Sandberg Firm presented that. That was, I thought was very interesting. A lot of it was kind of boring, but it's trying to figure out exactly what the difference between open enrollment and tuition agreements is and what is the impact on our district. And it wasn't clear after the presentation exactly what that was. And Scott Bergy was in on that as well, and I think we had some of the same questions. And so he was going to be trying to go back and finding more information within our district. So I don't know if he'll have something to report on that or at some future time. As, you know, we may be doing everything perfectly, but we may not be either, so. On the regular sessions, I, you know, usually I look at these agendas and say that, excuse me, you know, I like to go to board governance and those kinds of things. And, you know, frankly, this time I looked at it and I was kind of tired of those. And I went to one and decided that this wasn't worth it because there was a part two to it, so I didn't do that. So I went to some of the, some of the other things that they had that I usually don't go to. One was online learning. They had two people from the North Dakota Center for Distance Education talking about their program and the virtual learning that they've done through the pandemic and all those things. And that was, that was very interesting as to what they talked about, what was presented, what programs they have. You know, they go out and actually, they don't create any curriculum. They go out and find it, but it is North Dakota teachers that are teaching those classes. Then there was a session on competency framework, which was talking about the learning continuum and mastery learning framework through Senate Bill 2196. Lot of stuff on legislation and what the impact is on. So they talked about the learning continuum. This is all now in state law. Talking about North Dakota's portrait of a graduate. Some of the different things as it relates to academic attributes for ELA, student, social studies, science and math, and what are the things that need to be learned. Bismarck has a strong program and this is the Bismarck Empower Ed program is what it's called. And there was one of the people involved with that program was the presenter along with somebody from the state. Again, it was, it was very interesting. It was something different than, than what I normally go to. And I think stuff that we'll be hearing more about from our own administration as time goes on. Another session was, "School Boards Need to Know About Senate Bill 2304", which is Teaching of Native American History. That was a very interesting topic. And it was put on by a group that's, that's an ad hoc group that's been putting stuff together to help school boards to understand what that Senate bill means and how it should impact learning and how Native American history should be integrated throughout the curriculum. And so it was very interesting and I, and we'll be hearing more about that as, as time goes on from an older chief academic officer. And then I went to, the last session that I went to was Lessons Learned, the Mandan Referendum. We had a very successful school referendum. And that was very interesting in what they did, how they, they worked through their process and what they did. And so I think there was some definite tips coming out of there that, that we should talk about as time goes on, if we ever intending to have another referendum in the future. Just maybe some do's and some don'ts. You know, keep the message simple. They talked about their facilities, the facilities assessment, much like we do, enrollment projections. They did a survey that was mailed to all residents. They gathered a lot of good information from that and that helped provide some for the internal messaging, what they were going to put out there. They, they worked hard with their, their staff. They put on 53 different presentations. This was the superintendent, the assistant superintendent and the business manager. They put on 53 different presentations. Some of them might have been as small as two or three people, others to much larger groups. And that was really how they got their message out. Concentrating on internal staff and those small group presentations. They stayed off of social media, put all their information out on the website and those kind of things, but stayed away from social media, partly because so many comments that happen on social media are from people that are well outside the district. And so then those become the hotspot issues and you get off message because you've been trying to respond to some of that. So anyway, it was, it was very interesting and again, I think they had some, some good tips as what, at least for them, worked. So, thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Doug. Mr. Bergy?
Thank you. Yeah, the first day of the school law seminar, I was in the same sessions as Doug. Yeah, I've got a little more work to do on the enrollment and tuition agreements. There was a lot of information there. The thing with tuition that we have is, you know, the district that's on the receiving end of a tuition agreement obviously collects that tuition, but the state of North Dakota deducts 75% of that in the per pupil payment. So actually, the only winner in a tuition agreement is the state. They reduce their payout. And, and so the district that pays the tuition obviously pays that in full. And the district that receives the tuition, in effect, gives 75% of that back to the state. So, you know, that's, that's been an ongoing issue that, on that interim legislative committee I've been on, there's been a lot of discussion there and potentially in a year and a half from now, that will probably be brought up again. And then day two, there were a lot of separate business manager sessions and either business managers like to get up early or were slow learners. But we had, instead of starting at eight, we started at seven in the morning and went pretty much the whole morning and talked about things such as ESER funding and, you know, staffing and TFFR and some things of that nature. And I attended some different mini sessions on Friday than Doug, some, you know, TFFR, North Dakota Insurance Reserve and some different things of that nature. But, you know, really good attendance. Two of our base board members were there both days as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Let's move on to the debrief of the Schrader Middle School Building Tour on electronic page 37. Overall impressed in the facility and its ability to support 21st century teaching and learning, interior, exterior, green space. For those of you that were on the tour, thoughts, comments? Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, just, like a lot of our buildings, they had a lot of needs in the special education area, which is really underserved in that area, as well as ADA assessable. You know, part of the building was, had been upgraded maybe 25 years ago. So it was in, you know, nice shape and then you have the older part of the building. They have a lot of space out there. They'll do more if they need it.
Thank you. Other comments? Doug?
I agree with Bill, you know, on the ADA and the special education, there's definitely a need. You know, the, the benefit that Schrader has a lot of space. The seventh and eighth grade areas are a lot better than, than the rest of the building because they are the new ones, which was about 25 years ago. Lot of work needs to be done with the office space, the security, the dealing, you know, with, for counseling, nursing, those kind of things. So there's a lot of work to be done. It's, building is generally in pretty good shape other than those things that just need to be done, including HVAC project to get some temperature and air into the sixth grade area of that, of that building. So, well maintained, but in definite need of certain things.
Thank you. Shannon?
So the things that stuck out to me, there's the pickup drop off issues that were discussed about and kind of concurred across the board and probably has something to do with it being the 32nd Avenue corridor right there. Plus you have Kelly right next door. So a lot of congestion at pickup and drop off times, inconvenient access to the main, the main building door entry area. I, I mean, what stuck out to me was the small cafeteria for me. I kept saying how I thought middle school was like fantastic compared to the middle school I went to in terms of it actually had brick and mortar walls where mine didn't. It just had partitions everywhere. But our cafeteria was like 10 times the size of their cafeteria. So I don't know how that works. We must have sacrificed on walls and picked up in the cafeteria. The other thing that really stuck out to me too, and this is just a contrast to, again, the middle school I went to because that's all I know, the art room was like, it was pathetic. I mean, it was very small. It was a very small one room, smaller, like a quarter of this room size. And they were, there was talk of converting that into the office. So, I mean, it's, it's just interesting because compared to the science lab, which is another, you know, area of interest for me, the science lab was like phenomenally set up. It was comparative to my high school's science lab. So it's just interesting to see the compare, contrast between those two kind of extracurricular areas, if you will, so.
Thank you. Chris?
What Shannon shared, a bit of what I was going to speak to, that I think the, one of the concerns, of course, is, is the end of the school day, the traffic congestion. And what happens is you have, you have students who, you know, your middle school, you know, you're still, things are still connecting upstairs and the darting between traffic can be very concerning. So the traffic patterns, fortunately, there hasn't been an incident yet. It is a very, very troubling and like, for example, South 10th Street where a lot of the sixth grade get picked up, that becomes literally less than a one lane road between 320 and 345.
Thank you. Cynthia?
I, I think everybody said a lot. The, the one thing that really struck out with me, to me, special ed services, but especially the medically vulnerable going into what appeared to be more of a storage closet to get changed. And I, I really don't think that that's acceptable. The autism room, at first I thought it was big enough and then I learned that there were like 16 people in that room. And so it was way too small. And also not really, again, we're not, we're just not doing the stimulation needs that are needed for this, for autistic students. I mean, teachers are having to accommodate with, you know, other lighting, other lighting that they provide rather than our buildings. I think that was, those were the things that hadn't been called out.
Go ahead.
I agree with everything that's been said so far. And I did ask as we were leaving, out of all these issues that we heard tonight, which, which would he, the principal, choose to do first if he could? And it was HVAC in the sixth grade area and down in that office area by the gym there too. So just FYI.
Thank you. You guys have exhausted all my thoughts too, so I don't have any to add. So, thank you. Let's move on to item 7A, which is item for action, Finance Committee Report. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, Finance met last week to consider the, the further request for an additional half million dollars of a capital contribution for this facility. You've heard, you know, the report of, so you've heard most of what we heard on, on Thursday. Earlier, Dr., Scott Bergy indicated where we're going to have anticipated maybe an additional 400,000 of ESER that we don't have to pay to the state. So that was, in my mind, providing a funding source for this. So the committee did vote to recommend an additional $500,000 contribution toward the reaching of the 10 million, which would be matched by the state. So I think this is important. It's something that is coming from ESER funds. I mean, of course, there are other uses for it, but I think the opportunity is, is huge in this case and, and this is a good way to do it. If, if we did not have ESER money, so here's the silver lining in the pandemic. If we did not have that money, there's no way that we would have been able to do this project as a school district. We just would not have had the money, would not have been able to take the opportunity that this is presenting to us. So, so I think I, the committee recommended 5 million or 500,000 and I would move that we approve an additional $500,000 to come from the ESER funds.
Do we have a second? Second by Shannon. Comments or questions? Go ahead, Shannon.
So I'm going to echo in terms of, of the word investment. This is leveraging one-time funds to our advantage significantly. You don't get a return on investment that is instantaneous and a one-for-one match. That just doesn't happen. So I think it's, you know, hearing what Mr. Bergy brought up tonight in terms of the dollars potentially already being there and something that we can leverage against state dollars is just, it's unnecessary and it's, you know, again, it's the, the one-time investment isn't, isn't what I agonize over. It's the sustained cost of it. And so for me, it, it's acceptable to do a one-time investment into something that will have such a great impact, so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, Cynthia?
Could I hear again from Scott in terms of how much the funding that you said was other funding? Not the SR3 funding, but the funding from the state you mentioned, you just mentioned it too. What was the dollar figure for that?
Yeah, during the last legislative session, the legislature, it put forth a dollar figure that equated to $133 per student statewide to cover part of the software upgrades that the state needed for their educational systems. And now that's going to, instead of $133, that's going to come in at $88 per student. Well, we've got 7400-plus students, so it's going to be, you know, about 400, little over $400,000 that, that Grand Forks Public Schools is not going to have withheld from a state per pupil payment. So, you know, that would provide, you know, 400,000, roughly 400,000 of the, of this $500,000 ask tonight with, and, and that's directly out of ESER funding as well.
Thank you. That answers that question. And then I just, I just have to make a couple points. I do believe that art, music and sports also attain better student engagement and probably also produce higher graduation rates. I really, I feel like I must be a cheerleader though for Becca Kruger. I, if you look later, there's a comment on superintendent's evaluation. I call out Becca for her comments during the referendum. I think what Becca said tonight has moved me as well to consider this as an investment. I work with a lot of families that don't have money and income. And so I could see, I can see the advantage, definitely. But then, you know, you have to weigh Jackie's comment about transportation. So we do need to consider looking at transportation. So I guess what I'm saying is that message that Becca gives and that Catherine Galach gave, those are the kinds of messages as a district I think that we need to get out there more. I have not received any public comment on this, zero, which I don't know what that says. You're going out to many businesses, but yet my inbox and my telephone calls are all about masks. And so I don't, I don't know what that says, but I just wanted to bring it up. Thanks.
I think that tells you what the public is thinking about. Other questions or comments? If now we have a motion. Oh, go ahead, Shannon.
No, I think what Cynthia is saying is really important to, and it's something I've brought up to a few folks, is the, the messaging of this investment as we move forward needs to be very tight and very consistent throughout because we have some other challenges ahead of us that are going to look like we're pulling back from investments we've made previously. And I think it's really important to get to the core of why this here and, and not over here? Because that will continue to come up and you have a lot of the same tenants of success rates and, you know, serving student populations and why aren't we doing things for the gifted? And, you know, all these other things that, that do also require some investment in our, in our students. So I think it's important to keep in mind.
Thank you. Amber?
As the CTE Committee, the
As the, the CTE Committee, the Career Impact Academy, has been running, there's been a, four subcommittees. And one of those subcommittees is the Public Relations, Public Engagement, Community Engagement Subcommittee. And I am a part of that. Becca's on it. Dr. Brenner's on it. Tanya's on it. And, and we discussed sort of this internal and external communication campaign, engagement campaign. And as we've talked about, the conversations that the steering committee members and the fundraising team has had with, with all of these individuals, we've been able to capture questions, comments, feedback. And one of the business tech ed teachers, Trevor Lennon, has been doing some video captures of individuals who have benefited from these programs or in an industry who would, would benefit from a center like, like this. And we, we had a, a little sneak peek of some of those videos. And I think what you'll find from some of those individuals and, and some of the individuals that we've talked about or the conversations that we've, we've talked about capturing with folks is that their education and experience has become holistic education and experience, and that they've been able to benefit from not only experiences under the CTE fold, but that they've been exposed to other areas, whether it's through their CTE education or through the school district in concert with the educational system. And so, I think, you know, for me, as someone who went through the CTE program and the business side and health careers, I was a first-generation college student, and, and obviously, my parents finished high school. But going that route and trying to graduate and figure out what I wanted to do afterwards, it was a little bit interesting path for me because I didn't have mentors in my parents to teach me what to do or where to go. And so, the CTE really provided me with an opportunity to sort of test things out before I went to college. And I think those are the types of stories that we need to capture with not only our students, but the, the industry professionals. And so, I think as we talk about the CTE experience, I've started to understand how it is a supplement and a bridge to a lot of these other programs that if the conversation is this versus that, it, it sort of puts things in the pots for, you know, the community. And I know that that's what the community is going to ask. There will be those groups of people who will say, "We are passionate about this, and why aren't you funding this versus that?" But I think if we can continue to talk about CTE programming as a supplement and as a dichotomy to some of these other programs that creates a holistic experience, then we can talk about how we can fund all of it together and, you know, potentially utilize the funding that we're going to get from the increased exposure to CTE fields and people living and working in our community after they graduate and paying taxes, which obviously then increases our bottom line. So, I'll get off my soapbox, but I just think that at some point, they become a supplement where we're working together to create a holistic experience.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not, the motion on the floor is to approve an additional $500,000 donation for the creation of the Career Impact Academy. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Becca, Keith, Todd, thank you for hanging in here tonight. Let's move on to item 7C, Superintendent Evaluation Committee Report. It's on electronic. Oh, I'm sorry, consent. I already crossed off. So, we have consent agenda as amended on pages 39 through 42. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda? Move by Bill. Do we have a second? Second by Jackie. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. I guess I need to put my cheating glasses on more often. 7C, Superintendent Evaluation Committee Report. Go ahead, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you. The Superintendent Evaluation Committee met on November 1st, 2021. We reviewed nine of the 13 board members that completed it by that Friday deadline, and since, two more board members provided input, which will be incorporated into the final report. During that meeting, Dr. Brenner shared his reflections about the narrative, and also the committee members discussed each domain and provided additional comments. It was a consensus that the committee moved forward with a draft evaluation that finds a superintendent performance to be satisfactory in all areas to the school board with a unanimous recommendation for approval. And also, and I guess, supporting documentation for that can be found in your packet, pages 44 to 72. But an interesting note of the, of the committees that I preside, if you notice on this, page 43, called the order at 5:00 PM. And being the time traveler I am, we adjourned at 4:39 PM.
So, it's 23 and a half hours?
Yep. Anybody that wants to learn about time travel, meet me here yesterday at 5:00, and I'll show you.
Mr. Manley will be chairing the next school board meeting. Questions for, for Jeff or, or any of the committee members or clarifying comments? I know Dr. Brenner couldn't be tonight. I know he's got a, a, a plan in place to address some of the, the, the comments that came up. And, and I don't know those specifically, so I'm not going to try and, try and regurgitate those today. But at the next meeting, we will give him an opportunity to, to let the whole board know his plans for the feedback that he got and what he's got planned, so. If not, do we have, go ahead, go ahead, Bill.
Just, I'd like to kind of make a clarifying comment as it relates. Because if you look at this, you would believe that I probably rate the superintendent the lowest. And I just want to, you know, this is something, a rating that's done, because I strongly believe that our superintendent has done an excellent job and consistently meets and exceeds expectations. And how this is, it's got, you know, a scoring from one through four. And I have, how this is how I did it back when I was working in the business world. And I have high expectations of people. And so, I rated our superintendent a three, which is effective, which is consistently demonstrates capable and satisfactory performance, and to me, that is doing excellent job. There's a little different philosophies that others have, and I just, just wanted to clarify that, that I don't think he's done a bad job, because I rated three versus four. I think he's done an excellent job, and, and I hope that he's able to continue to do that for a long, long time in this district.
Thank you for that. Other questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by, second by Chris. Any further questions or comments? If not, the motion is to approve the superintendent evaluation as outlined. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item 7D, because I know that's what everybody has been waiting for all night, which is Policy Review Committee on pages 73 through 102. Dr. Shab, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lunn. All right, so we've got first readings of some new policies. We did meet, and we didn't time travel. We have the following policies that we have looked at and would recommend adopting or approving for the first reading. Operation of unmanned aircraft systems, which we did look at and had Eric Ripley actually took a look at it. And we are operating unmanned aircraft systems in the school, so it is an important policy. Employee social media use, a new supplementary policy. One on executive sessions, again, a new recommended policy. And you'll see the legal reference there noted. Public participation at board meetings replaces our policy number 1002 and replaces 8509, publication of agenda, citizen request representations or proposals. So, we will be rescinding that policy at the second reading. Board meeting agenda and pre-meeting preparation, this is an existing policy that's being amended. School board evaluation, which we thought was an important one, is included here. So, those were the ones that are first readings. I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve those. Do we have a second? Second by Chris. Go ahead, Amber.
Under, I apologize for not asking this ahead of time, but on page 81, the, in the red, the first sentence is, "School board members shall not engage in a response or enter into a debate about any issues brought before the board during..." And then it ends with a period? It seems like there's maybe a missing word.
Thank you so much for catching that. So, that should be during the board meeting.
Okay, or words, yeah.
Correct. Cindy? During the board meeting?
Page 81.
So, one of the things on this one is we changed the words to "public comment" from "citizen comment."
I just didn't know if you had to add that and just with the changes.
Oh, definitely, we need to include the words "the board meeting."
Other questions or comments? Go ahead, Chris.
Dr. Shab, in, in the meeting, if we look at on page 81, number two, it says, "State their, state their name and address." We had the discussion that the address we would omit, and they would just state their name and community.
We decided that during the meeting because there has been some concern about having people's location given, and then someone...
Well, and I can address, I, I actually had a constituent that I met with, and this individual shared that when they spoke and provided their address, there's, there's a likelihood for retaliation. And if you know, our names are posted with, we don't, we no longer have home addresses listed. We have our phone numbers listed. So, if we, if we have that for ourselves, then we should certainly have the same for the members of the community.
If you noticed tonight, Dr. Lunn just asked for the community. So, it, that needs to change. We, we did, we did talk about that. State, it's also on the blue card. State their name and community for the minutes. Number two, instead of state their name and address, state their name and community.
I'm not even sure you need to put "and community." I think if you, because it's on the, it's on the public comment card. I think if you just say, "State their name," then, then we can tie it to their, their comment cards. I'm, I'm not even sure I'd say "community." I'd just say, "State their name for the minute, minutes."
You did tonight, so I thought you wanted it.
And you made the motion, Cynthia, and you made the second. Mr. Douthat, are you comfortable with making those two changes that were outlined?
Aye, am.
What was the, what, what are we voting on again?
We're voting on the whole, the, all of the, in, on your electronic packets, page 73 of the first readings with the changes then for public participation at board meetings, to have two, "State their name," and then the catch that you made during the board meeting.
So, what pages are we voting on?
All of them.
Because 95 has the same paragraph, page 95. Same paragraph as 81.
Yeah. So, why are there two copies here? I think it's in there because of the rescinded copies that follow it. I, I don't know why, why, Dr. Lunn, can you, why was it in on page 81 and 95?
I don't know, because it's, it's the same policy, BCBA. So, for correcting it on page 81, it's, it's, it's corrected. We don't have to correct it twice. Any other questions or comments about any of these proposed first readings? Go ahead, Doug.
I guess a, a question. On policy BCBA, under the public participation, the first sentence says, "Only items on the published board agenda will be discussed at any meeting of the board unless the superintendent or a board member requests an addition to the agenda of a regular meeting and the board members present a proven accordance with board policy." Then back on BCAA, which is on page 85, item four, we still have public, changed citizen to public, but then we have in parentheses still non-agenda items. To me, there's an inconsistency between, we're going to only, to me, I read the first one, "Public participation would be only on items on board agenda." But then in, where we're actually creating the agenda, we still say "non-agenda items." Is that the intent, or is it just to be on agenda items for public comment?
Cynthia, you have a comment on that?
Trying to read and trying to remember, so. Well, right now, I mean, we, we've always allowed public comment on both non-agenda and agenda items, except that we don't ever discuss the non-agenda items. So, does this mean, I don't know. I guess we need to look at it again, because it's not clear to me now. Put on the spot.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Yeah, I, I think it was discussed in committee, and it was voted to leave it as it is just to make sure that our public still has access to our ears in the current scenario that we're in. Just to allow, to make sure that our public does not have their voice shut down, specifically around the pandemic. I'll, I'll point that out. So, for example, we didn't have a smart restart committee update on the agenda. If somebody was here to talk about our current practices, as been the, the current state of affairs, the new policy would not allow for that. So, there's, the discrepancy was there on purpose, just to make sure that we weren't being, it wasn't being misconstrued that we were being nefarious for some reason by adopting the new policy and shutting down public commentary.
So, then I guess the question would be, is that, is there an intent at some point in the future to come back and make these tie together?
Yes, that's my understanding. And it would, it really would align with giving more forewarning to the community, so again, it wasn't misconstrued.
Because this was one of the things that the school law update part that was discussed was related to non-agenda items. And their recommendation was that you shouldn't have non-agenda items talked about at a public board meeting.
And that's what we discussed at the Policy Review Committee, but we felt now was not the time to enact that. Go ahead, Shannon.
Yeah, and I, I kind of share the same confusion in terms of, because currently, you can get up and talk about anything you want as a public and a community member. I mean, so, I mean, if we're suggesting in the future, we're going to stop allowing that, I just am curious, kind of the enforcement mechanism that you do that by? I mean, certainly, that's going to be up to the board to make that decision in the future. But I think as board members, we all show restraint to at least listen. board members, we all show restraint to at least listen, however, as a school board, we don't discuss non-agenda items because that's prohibited. So I just would, I guess I question the wisdom in attempting to do that, and then the mechanism by which you would actually do such a thing in the future, but.
Well, I think how we would do that would have to be up to the board. I think, I think what most people in the public don't understand, but that you all understand, is there are no state statutes that say you have to have public comments at a board meeting. The reason that public comments are brought up for this board is because this board and this administration has felt it's important to allow public comments, and past boards and past administrations have felt so, and I don't think any of us have any intention of stopping that. I think that we want that to continue. On the other hand, there is no state statute, and I've heard from the public at several meetings, well, it's my right to talk for as long and on what I want to talk for. No, that's not true, there is no state law that, we've granted that right, I think we would want to continue that, but I think we have to put some guardrails up on some of this. So that, how that's actually implemented would have to be discussed at future meetings. Go ahead Jackie.
I have a little hesitation with just kind of doing away with non-agenda items, because I think it would put, well, it's possible, but I think it would put some extra responsibility on our shoulders to respond to emails and put email concerns on the agenda then. I became a board member largely because a concern that was not on an agenda. It was a concern that students had brought to me, and I came and spoke at a board meeting. And it was a topic that largely a group of people felt was being ignored and not being an agenda item, because it was more of an operational piece. But still, I thought worthy of consideration and did change some things moving forward as leadership changed. So I think, you know, part of me in kind of protecting that voice of the public, of people who maybe are not as likely to email, or would like to be a presence and have you have to see their face and hear their story, I think that's something to consider. So if we do move to that, I would really want us to have some extra responsibility in bringing items to the agenda then for those people.
And just for clarification, there's no intention at this time to do any of that. It was talked about in, potentially in the future, so there's no intention at this meeting or subsequent meetings to do it, it's, the intention is to think about that down the road, which is what most school districts do.
So then, do you think we should hold off on these two?
I think we're okay and we can look at, because this is only the first reading, we have a second reading, if we need to rectify some differences in between policies, I think we can correct that before the second meeting, so. I mean, it's just the first reading. We could vote down as a board anything at the next meeting if we didn't like the changes that we saw. So my thought would be is we can go ahead and vote it and fix any discrepancies between policies, but it's up to the board. If the board wants to send it back to the committee, that's certainly within the purview of this board. Right now, we have a motion and a second. Do we have further questions or comments or thoughts from board members? So the motion is to approve these, and then they will be brought back in two weeks for a second reading. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Go ahead Cynthia.
One more here. It's a board regulation, DEBHBR, district social media accounts. This is a board regulation that complements DEBH, employee social media use. That is, I'd make a motion to consider this district social media accounts.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Doug. Further questions or comments about DEBHBR? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on to item seven E, which is a research request on pages, electronic pages one oh three through one ten. Catherine.
Yes, so this is the result of a newly adopted policy, policy GCC, which is protection and people rights amendment and third-party research on students. And in short, it means that any sort of research request that formerly used to come to the assistant and associate superintendent's office for consideration, that impacts students in any way, shape, or form, needs to be now approved by the school board. What you have in front of you is a request from a researcher out of the University of Chicago, a researcher who is a graduate of Grand Forks Public Schools, who knows Dr. Brenner, is why she reached out to him, to see if she could have access to interview some of our students and some of our teachers around how discussions of current events in high school social studies classrooms might impact student engagement and learning. And so what you need to know about this is that all protocols will be followed, as in the past, to ensure that student privacy rights are protected, to make sure that consent is attained by family members who are in charge of their youngsters, and that it will be voluntary for the teachers. The building administrators were supportive of this, but also very aware that our teachers have a lot on their plates and may not want to be voluntold in the situation to participate. So administrative recommendation is to allow Ms. Megan Hansen to proceed with her research following the guidance of policy GCC.
Questions or comments? Shannon? And we have a motion by Shannon, we have a second by Chris Delfit. Further questions or comments? Go ahead Cynthia.
She was actually one of the students who recommended having student board members.
Thank you. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight A, announcements. Catherine, Dr. Lewis, do you have any announcements? Any announcements? Okay, thank you. Board request for future consideration.
Something that Doug had mentioned was, it's not really a, well, maybe it is. In terms of talking about increasing and retaining and retention of educators, on the jobs report that recently came out, we have rebounded with jobs faster than the great recession. I think it was like seven times faster than the recession. One of, well, there's two areas that are of extreme concern, at least in the report though, is childcare, the four K, and K through twelve educators are the two red flags that people are flagging as problematic. Hospitality and service industry folks have seen record climbs in, well, service industry folks have seen record climbs in salary and wage earning adjustments, in the, I think it was like six point five to seven percent wage increase. And what was interesting about it is that inflation has climbed by about five point four percent currently, and so you're really only seeing a nominal gain in kind of spending power in those industries anyway. So I just, I mentioned that because I think it is, it is a problem, and it's something that if it's sustained, we're going to have to, I think as a state and states across the country, we're going to have to figure out how do they support K-12 school districts in recruiting and retention, because it's, I mean, we're talking huge salary increases just to keep up with COLA adjustments. So it's just something that I thought was interesting and thought I would share, because it stuck out to me as a board member.
Thank you. Item eight C, school board norm. Shannon, how did we do?
Really well, except no time travel tonight.
No time travel, unfortunately. Go ahead Jackie.
The research request and celebrations and all of those things that we talked about today made me think of something that I had thought of when I first started as a board member, and I haven't brought it back up, but if there is any way for us to organize in the future, some sort of, we just have a lot of professionals that are employed by our district, teachers, students, who do research, who contribute to intellect, who do some pretty amazing things, I'm sure. I would love to have an opportunity to kind of celebrate some of those things sometimes. The geek in me that likes to kind of read that kind of stuff and know where everybody's doing and what their research interests are, you know, if we, I don't know, I don't know if that looks like in the future, something like, you know, having a staff like poster session where we get to see all the cool stuff that our district did and different things people contributed to, or if they do that at campuses, if it's something we can be aware of and be invited to, so we can also celebrate those things. Just something to put on the radar, I think, would be really cool.
Thank you. We've been going since five thirty, so Dr. Lewis, is it okay if we take a five-minute break before we go into the work session?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. We'll meet back at nine oh eight, because it just turned over, so, and then we'll start
Reduce us a few minutes here and there. So, just so you know, we will hopefully be able to do this in fewer than 60 minutes, but still not harming the process. So, back on November 8th, we talked about, I'm sorry, the last board meeting, we talked about our current reality. And that's where we really listed out the pieces of where we were, we used information that we all had, and we brought to the table about what is our current reality. And some of those pieces that we had was our facility needs exceed our current funding, legislative power impacts our revenue growth, we have taxpayers pay less for school district than elsewhere, and so on. So that's the list that we generated. One of the points of clarification that we did want to make, however, was there was a bit of confusion around the why. And some people interpreted that as that we were trying to come up with the why of our current reality, meaning how did we get here, what is the why behind that? That's actually not what the guiding change process is about, so I think that will help us to clarify, is that really our current reality is a piece of the why we need to do the budget realignment process. So hopefully that puts that right into perspective for you. So, our first task tonight is really going to be to finalize our current reality. And finalizing that could mean that as a small group, you all say, "Good to go." We all agree with this publicly and privately, and we are good to go. It also might mean that we have our small groups report out, "There's one thing here that we don't agree on," as far, we cannot publicly and privately agree to having that on our current reality. And then we'll talk about that. So that's really what that will look like. So that's our first step, is to finalize our current reality. Then our next step is to really move on to the results. And if you look on our guiding change document, and I will project this in just a quick moment here, you'll see that the middle section is actually the unacceptable means, the not how. But what we really want to do is build out the results or the what. So tonight, after we finalize the current reality or the why, it's really our time to work in small groups, and we'll use the same process that we did at our previous session, to really talk about and to distill down, what is it that we want? So you'll see in the board example that we gave you from the other district, it's things like maintain a 6% fund balance, it's things like align our budget with our strategic plan. So those are the pieces of what is it that we want at the end of this process? We want a balanced budget. I'm not trying to feed you answers, just give you examples for illustrative purposes. And then, this will lead up to, not tonight, but at our next session, the unacceptable means, the not how. And that seems a little bit, hmm, I don't love that grammar, or pieces like that, but it's really about, this is not how we're going to follow this budget realignment process. So that's really kind of what's unfolding for tonight. We are going to work to skinny down our consensus process as well, so I think that you'll like that as well, we've worked on how to refine our dots. So for right now, what I would like you to do is let's take seven minutes to chat as our small groups. Are there any components under our group section of the why that you cannot live with, that you don't want on the document? And I'm going to project that in just a moment, otherwise, it should be in the very last page, I believe, on the board packet. So with that, let's come together again at 9:21. Go ahead, Cynthia.
So, I, when I got the board packet, I wrote on the top, why we need to move forward with budget alignment. So some of these don't answer that question, to me. A lack of knowledge of teaching and learning principles in our community. So that's, this is what we're going to be doing? Okay.
Good job of previewing. Perfect. Yep, exactly. All right. I'll project now, and we'll see you back here at 9:22. When we'll come back together, our team here is going to go ahead and share out the ideas first. What Cindy is going to do for us, is we've got this on edit mode, so you'll be able to see the edits that we are making here, and then we'll come back around at the end and say, "Is there anything on here? Any of the changes that folks can't live with?" And then, if everyone can live with the changes that have been made, then we'll just go forward and make those as part of our permanent changes. I will ask, when groups are sharing out, please make sure that you are using the microphones last time. It wasn't streaming well, and we weren't all using our microphones. And you'll see me keep popping up. My computer is tired, so it keeps falling asleep, so my apologies on that. But our team here is going to kick us off.
So, we eliminated some. So for the first one, we thought it could, we would delete the first sentence, instead say, "Buildings not, are not optimal for teaching and learning. Facilities are inadequate and..." "...not ADA compliant or meeting other federal requirements." So combining a little bit of the first sentence with that one. We're not wedded to those words, but we did a little wordsmithing. The second one, we kept, building the reserve fund, but we probably would just say, "Current general fund balance is at the minimum needed to operate, and this is not sustainable." We deleted the lack of knowledge of teaching and learning principles in our community, since we didn't feel it answered what we need to move forward with budget alignment. We eliminated, or we kept, facility needs exceed current funding. We kept this 85% of general fund expenditures, but this needs to be wordsmithed. We kept, did we keep legislative, we deleted legislative power impacts revenue growth. We actually think use general fund dollars for facility needs versus proactive funding is a result. We deleted the next three, the regulated mandated obligations need to accommodate future growth, need to meet modern educational needs. We kept excess number of buildings. We questioned taxpayers pay less for school district than elsewhere. We kept GFPS has more employees per student than comparable districts. We deleted the next two. And that is our report.
Thank you. We took a similar approach, and based off of what Cynthia said, just to cut down the dialogue, the two that we had in question, and I liked your word, Cynthia, as a result, we looked at access number of buildings and too many employees per student, as also questioning whether those are a result, or should be in a different column moving down the line. So that's what we can add to that conversation. We didn't eliminate the ones that you did, except we agreed on the lack of knowledge, one that we also thought that that was, one that was in question of being able to be omitted, the lack of knowledge of teaching and learning principles in our community.
I'm not sure I'm the person who should be talking right now, considering my brain status, but I'll try it. Agree with many of them. The 85% one, we suggested just keeping the statement, need to be competitive, salaries lower than comparables or comparables, and getting rid of the rest. We've thought that the, the general fund dollars for facility needs, we figured we needed to reword that, so keep it, but say something in effect of, "To provide proactive facilities funding." Because it seemed to have just a better flow to it. We actually kept need to accommodate future growth. We didn't, we didn't eliminate that one, or the modern educational needs. We thought that was a part of the why we need to realign our budget, is to meet modern educational needs and plan for the future. And then, I don't know if we got to the bottom, though, but I'm curious to know why the last two were struck from the first group. Bless you, Bill. Bill sneezed, if you're wondering why I was blessing Bill. Bless the rest of you as well for being here this late.
Catherine, we'll swing back to this group on that piece. Let's get our last group to share out, and then we'll come right back on that piece. I'm sorry, was your group not done?
Okay. Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you, thank you.
We good? We agree with majority of these edits, the 85% of general fund expenditures or salaries, I think we need to wordsmith that a little bit, and agree with use general fund dollars for facility, to change the wording there a bit. Otherwise, anything else, Scott? Did you, I think that was it mainly.
Yeah, I don't know, I think like the last couple, we, we thought were important to still keep included, I think. Special education. Something ADA could be placed in that first statement. And it certainly covers that students aren't being served in, are being served in subpar learning environment. Because we know it's not the teaching and learning specifically, but it's the, it's the physical plant.
And actually on that first one, rather than saying not up to code, I would say not ADA compliant rather than up to code.
We said that.
Code issues too, not just ADA, because there's sprinkling requirements and all that kind of stuff.
Does code though equal federal requirements?
I think code means something to Chris Arnold. That would mean something different to the average person and you're, I think you're correct.
Add building code then.
There you go.
I mean, I, ADA, I'm fine with adding ADA in there. I just think you need to keep code or building code in there.
So you suggest, are you suggesting that we would, that that sentence would say not up to building code, comma ADA compliance, comma, or other regular, other federal requirements?
As far as you say current building. Originally built, it was in compliance building. We just changed it on.
All right, team, can we give this a really thorough look? The left-hand side and think about if there's anything with the red changes now and the edits that you cannot live with being up there on the very far left column. So I'll give you just a few minutes. Go ahead.
Just like clarify, that one that's still up there that says use general fund dollars for facility needs versus proactive funding to provide proact. I mean, what are, we're the ones that talked about that. Really, we want just the bullet point to read to provide proactive facilities funding.
So delete everything in black, right?
Right.
Okay. Oops, sorry.
You know, I think in our conversation was more that's the, it's something that's really evident that needs to be addressed. So we just, that's the reason we didn't want it eliminated entirely. But as to which location, I don't think it matters.
So for example, if we look at the special education, the first bullet point on the left column are inadequate and not up to code, ADA code or meeting federal ADA requirement. Something ADA could be placed in that first statement. And it certainly covers that students aren't being served in, are being served in subpar learning environment. Because we know it's not the teaching and learning specifically, but it's the, it's the physical plant.
And actually on that first one, rather than saying not up to code, I would say not ADA compliant rather than up to code.
We said that.
Code issues too, not just ADA, because there's sprinkling requirements and all that kind of stuff.
Does code though equal federal requirements?
I think code means something to Chris Arnold. That would mean something different to the average person and you're, I think you're correct.
Add building code then.
There you go.
I mean, I, ADA, I'm fine with adding ADA in there. I just think you need to keep code or building code in there.
So you suggest, are you suggesting that we would, that that sentence would say not up to building code, comma ADA compliance, comma, or other regular, other federal requirements?
As far as you say current building. Originally built, it was in compliance building.
All right, team, can we give this a really thorough look? The left-hand side and think about if there's anything with the red changes now and the edits that you cannot live with being up there on the very far left column. So I'll give you just a few minutes. Go ahead.
Just like clarify, that one that's still up there that says use general fund dollars for facility needs versus proactive funding to provide proactive. I mean, what are, we're the ones that talked about that. Really, we want just the bullet point to read to provide proactive facilities funding.
So delete everything in black, right?
Right.
Okay. Oops, sorry.
And I still think the, went to sleep again. I still think the second and fourth bullets need to be wordsmithed. We're done. How about just needs to be competitive, period?
Salaries need to be competitive.
Or should say compensation. It's not just salaries.
Thank you. The taxpayers pay less for school district than elsewhere. I think what we're looking at, we had this discussion is it's are the, we're talking the percentage of, if you will, all the, all the taxing entities, correct? So we want to, I don't know, wordsmith that so that it reads more clearly.
I don't know if it's just percentage. I guess I'll defer to Scott. I mean, it's, it's actual dollars per $200,000 home as well.
Well, yeah, if you compare an equal value home in the various five large school districts, Grand Forks School District property taxes are lower than the school district taxes of the other communities.
I think the only thing that we need to be clear so that the public, that the public knows is that we're not blaming the taxpayers for paying less. It's because we haven't asked them to pay more. So I don't know if that needs to be clarified or that just will be understood by the public or others.
What about not using taxpayers then? So taxes are less, that takes it off the burden of the taxpayer? I don't know. Taxes are less? There are less taxes coming to the school district?
Maybe mill levies and corresponding property taxes for Grand Forks Public Schools are less than the corresponding other school districts or comparable school districts.
I like that because again, it eliminates, it doesn't sound like we're blaming the taxpayer.
You might have, you might have to repeat that Scott for Cindy.
If I can remember what I said. You could say in effect, you know, Grand Forks School District mill levy and property taxes are less than the corresponding mill levies and taxes of the other comparable North Dakota school districts or other comparable school districts.
Anything else on here that you can't live with that you want changed?
Is there a difference in where Cindy's editing now? Right above it says employees per student. And the next line below that says employees per student as well. Is there a difference in those? Can somebody describe that?
I just think we need to delete that last one there. I think we added, that's, it added what was in there into the one before it.
Is everybody comfortable with the way the second bullet reads?
So I have a suggestion for that. I was just going to ask that. So I would say we, building the reserve, reserve fund will be the what? So the current general fund balance is at the minimum, the minimum needed to operate and is not sustainable is the why we need to move forward with, right? So building the reserve fund would be what we would do.
And I don't know, technically I think it's the, we have a reserve fund. I think it would be, I don't know, increasing the building fund to a, I don't know, a level that, I don't know, I'm trying to think, think of what. But we want to have a building fund that, you know, that has a, has a balance that will help us with our deferred maintenance needs. I'm not sure, I'm not probably saying it the way I mean it here right now, but it's, but yeah, really the reserve fund, we have a, we have a three mil special reserve fund. So it's like, that's not what we're referring to.
Could we just take that reserve fund part? You know, where we've got the one that says to provide proactive facilities funding through a building reserve fund? And then just keep, then, then just do the general fund. You know, why we've got here is because we've used facilities requirement dollars repairs has brought down our facilities balance. And so the need is to build the general fund balance and build the reserve fund. Well, so where you're at there, to provide proactive facilities funding through a building reserve fund.
Scott, if you put, if you put reserve in that building, reserve fund, is that confusing? Or do you just put building fund?
Well, you could just use building fund if you want to, yeah.
Isn't that a what? To provide proactive facilities funding? Is that how we got to why we need a budget alignment, alignment?
No, that's the, I think that's the ultimate goal.
What needs to change to under the column of what?
Yeah, the general fund one is how we got here, I think.
I have a loud voice. The just used general fund dollars for facility needs, period. Just because that's what was done.
Is that past tense though?
Oh, it wasn't supposed to be past tense, sorry.
So can we change it to currently using general fund dollars?
Then I'll go back to the second one. Do you need the second bullet? If you've got those things there and then the what on the other side? Or do you get rid of the second bullet?
All right, last call for any changes on this one. Things that you can't live with here. Cindy, I'm going to have you just do that check mark on each of these then. And then we'll let people read it so that it's in black and easy for you to see. All right, team, go ahead and give this one more read now that you're seeing a clean version. All right, can I get a thumbs up if we are ready to move on to the what, the results?
Yeah, I can't raise my thumb quite.
Okay.
My, my one question is, is the overall compensation package needs to be competitive? Is that how we got where we are? Or is that where we're heading or, I just, just a question? That's the only one I wonder about.
I think that belongs more in the right-hand column of the what?
Yes, we are at the Dr. Book.
Yeah, Chris, do you see I got kicked over to a different table?
We moved Dr. Book up over to the other table.
Okay, team, can I do a thumbs up one more time?
So I just have to ask though, is there any other reason that we're here where we are right now?
And again, remember, I'm just going to pick a little bit on your words Cynthia. It's really about what is our current reality, not the reason of how we got here. It's what is our current reality?
I guess, you know, that I agree, overall compensation package is in the right place now. But I still think we need something under the why related to that. So I, would it be the why that Grand Forks Public Schools has fallen the seventh or eighth on the comparable districts in compensation? We used to be number one or number two, and now we're number seven and number eight. But I think that's something that then the what is we have to be competitive and we're not today.
Or could it be you're not recruiting and retaining teachers or staff?
I mean, just something.
Something along that lines.
I'm not sure exactly what it means.
Or struggling to recruit and or retain.
So I'm hearing two different things there. So we have a number of unfilled vacancies. And then the other piece was Grand Forks Public Schools is not regionally competitive from a compensation package standpoint, right?
But wouldn't the why be because we're using money on our facilities from our general fund, which hasn't allowed us to stay competitive? Or do you think it should be a separate bullet you two on the, on the left side?
To me, we, you know, the excess buildings and employees per student, we probably wouldn't care about number of employees per student if we were competitive with salary. That's one, you know, that, so, because actually having that, I think is good. Teachers like that. You know, in classrooms where we have more paras and we have smaller classes. But we're now fighting against the fact that we're no longer. we're now fighting against the fact that we're no longer competitive. And so we're having difficulty attracting and retaining. So I don't, I don't know the words to put, but I still think we need something there that addresses that.
I'm okay with making some statement about not being able to attract and retain adequate staff or something like that, whatever the group thinks.
You might want to make it staff because I don't know, like paras and cooks and custodians, I don't know if that's competitive either. So you might want to be staff, staff rather than just teachers, have it be staff.
And we still need yours, right Doug? That you brought up about regional, you're good? Okay. Can everybody live with the red? Unable to attract and retain adequate staff. Thumbs up if you can keep the unable to attack, attract and retain adequate staff. I think we're good. Any other comments before we move to the results section? All right, team, we're going to just get our feet wet in the results section. And the what, so we actually have done a nice job here of getting some of the pieces sorted out. So what we really need to do here is as our teams think about what is it that we want? What are our, our results? What are the what we already see? We want to be regionally competitive, right, to attack, attract and retain the best candidates. We want our students, our special ed students to be served. So the what, I'm gonna skip over that one right now. And to provide proactive facilities funding through a building reserve fund. So our, the results of the what it is that we want. So some of those may not fit there that we have up there already. So we're gonna think about in our small groups here, what is it that we want? What is the result? What are the results of our budget realignment process? What is it that we want at the end here of our budget realignment process? I'm gonna give you until 10:04 on this in small groups. And then Cindy, I'm gonna ask for a point of order here. Can we just collect the papers and get those typed up word for word how they have them for then our next study, our next work session? So that's what we're gonna do, team. We'll just work in a small group for 10 minutes to build out what is it that we want as our results? The what here? And then we'll use that as we springboard into our next work session. Just use the line chart paper on your table work spots. 10:30 tonight. What I mean is we know that this shareout, if anyone's like me or my computer, we're probably gonna have some more ideas, maybe when we are a little less fatigued. So this will be just our first blush at sharing out some thoughts around the results or the what. So this group was very quick to point out to us that they are ready. So we will have you be our first sharers.
So when we looked at this column, one of the suggestions that we had was perhaps omitting the first bullet. Up, adding upgrade our special education learning environment throughout the district. Reword that second bullet to that. Add a bullet, have a substantial balanced budget with strong reserve fund. Have appropriate student-staff ratios. And the last one we suggested was provide overall competitive compensation and benefits package for all staff.
Perfect. Thank you. We're gonna type these all up separately, so we're not gonna take the time to do that right now. You wanna go?
Number one, to sustain a reasonable general fund balance. Number two, facilities committee needs to determine additional building funds needed. Number three, consolidation of facilities. And number four, optimize staffing levels to student needs.
Thank you. Catherine's group?
We have some overlap. Provide adequate and respectful learning environments and resources to accommodate modern learning needs and practices and student interests. Align resources with strategic priorities. Funded long-term facilities plan that utilizes efficiencies. Adequate general fund balance. Increase staff retention and student outcomes or achievement. Equitable access to a well-rounded, high-quality education.
Thank you. And our group here.
So we, I don't think I need to do the first two. So we reworded the first two, I'll just do it. Eliminate the, eliminate the academic access and opportunity gaps along racial and socioeconomic status. Students receiving special ed supports are served in an environment that is warm, welcoming and safe and meets their needs. Facilities that are suitable for highly effective teaching and learning environments. Fiscally stable school district. And then the last one is not worded yet. All students will have equitable access and opportunity to program offerings, blah, 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 et cetera. What you guys, what, what all of you said to not use gender language like guys.
Exactly. All right, team. The next study, work session that we will have, we will work to have more time here around our chart papers. So we'll get these typed up, but we'll actually bring these same chart papers right back out so that we can continue working on those. And then you'll see a very similar process to what we did as far as working to have consensus. So that then we have our, the results section finalized and then moving into the unacceptable means. So at this time, President Lunn, I would recommend that we conclude our work session.
So we will adjourn till 11:00 PM. And she'll be back here in 52 minutes. No. We are adjourned for the night and we will take this up on another day. Thank you all for